Get the details fixed up. Five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, maybe it's only five hundred thousand on solar panels, solar panels in a park. Give me a break. A city parks office. It's going to be in probably the oldest building in Dunwoody, okay? The former schoolhouse there should be on the historical agenda rather than a parks department. Do some more work. It's what the staff should be told. Number two. Agenda item number fifteen. Uh. It's on the conversion of staff positions, I mean, a contract position to staff positions. We should be going the other way around. We should be converting every staff position to a contract position. Go back to what the city was originally going to do. Okay? Be mean and lean. Okay? Uh, one of the first thing, the justification for doing this is the financial impact to the city will be minimal. If it's gonna be minimal, why make a change? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Okay? Keep them like it is. Uh. Second, one of the other items in the staff memo. It says it would allow for redundancy. Well, when I was in business, we tried to be efficient and eliminate redundancies. We don't want to have more redundancies. And then the third thing is there's an in-process compensation survey that we ought to wait until that's done to be able to make a good analysis of why to make a change. Okay, third item, uh, sorry, I missed the meeting on the path last week, but after I watched the video, I'm really not sorry I missed it. Okay? Uh, the, the person, the moderator ought to have been given the mayor's stability pledge. She was probably the most disrespectful person to run a meeting that I've ever met in my life. Okay? But she was pretty disrespectful. The most important slide in the entire presentation last week is slide number twenty-one. Slide number twenty-one. It says, okay, of the people who took the previous survey, thirty-three percent, the survey was on, should we have? It's not, it's not trails, it's eight to twelve foot walk. Eight to twelve foot concrete walk. So the, of the people who took the survey, thirty percent, thirty-three percent, no way, no how.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey.
That's what I say. No way.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Tom Simon. You have three minutes.
Tom Simon, you know me. He got my email today. I'm talking about the PATH Foundation February eighth meeting. Mayor, you said, we here and we're listening to you. Well, we asked you and you asked us, what do we want? We want you to listen to us and the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. We want you only to do the first path in Dunwoody regarding the PATH Foundation's trail proposals, which is on Ashford Dunwoody Road. The PCID, TL001, Ashford Dunwoody to Mount Vernon, established as priority one. This is what we want. You asked? No other paths. Look at that path, see how it comes out, and then you determine if you want to build thirty-two other paths. Concerning the path on the east side of Tilly Mill, which Greta De Mayo and the PATH Foundation recommended at the February eighth meeting. It is no coincidence that the PATH Foundation recommended the exact path on the east side of Tilly Mill that Tom Lambert, Michael Smith, and Ishree Sankar presented to the neighbors of Stevens Walk on August twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two. Happens to be alternate three. How can that be? Did someone tell the PATH Foundation what to recommend on Tilly Mill? Councilmember Lambert told the Dunwoody citizens that PATH Foundation was independent and they were not coerced or providing anything the city council members had presented previously regarding paths in Dunwoody. That's difficult to believe with what the PATH Foundation recommended, alternate number three. Also, Greta said she did not know that the path was originally planned to be on the west side of Tilly Mill. Also, Greta and P said they had not seen the Stevens Walk path recommendation that was presented by the neighbors of Stevens Walk at the same August twenty-five, twenty-two meeting to Lambert, Smith, and Sankar. Greta said she did not know the cost of paths, but she said the west side of Tilly Mill would require moving utilities. Then, how come the path on the east side of Tilly Mill would cost considerably more than the path on the west side of Tilly Mill? Has the PATH Foundation lost credibility? Have some Dunwoody council members lost credibility? Ninety-five percent of those who attended the February eighth meeting were older adults. I saw three or four of the thirty-somethings supposedly that Greta is developing these paths for. There's a disconnect with her statement. It appears that the younger Dunwoody citizens did not care enough to show up. Do they really want these paths? Cost of pass is definitely a topic of concern. We've heard it's gonna cost seven point five million for the one on Tilly Mill proposed. We have no idea what it's gonna cost on Ashford Dunwoody up to Mount Vernon. Folks. You get the idea. Lastly. City Hall. First and foremost, do no harm.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon. You'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Alan Gordon and I've lived in Dunwoody for eighteen years in the Brook Farm neighborhood. And the, uh, wasn't at the February eighth meeting and received notice from our homeowners association that the proposed path is going to go through the Waterford Park neighborhood into and encroach upon the, the public access and common areas of Brook Farm. I can tell you vehemently, everyone who I've spoken to does not want it to be, the path to be encroached into our neighborhood. In the past, from the Waterford neighborhood, uh, we have had security issues. We've had vandalism, vandalism issues. We've had trespassing issues with groups of young people, mostly teenagers, and especially in the summertime. Uh, think it was really fun to come use our common areas, but especially when most concerned, the swimming pool area. Um, and, uh, one of the, I think we have had such a little crime in our neighborhood is because there is only one means of ingress egress from one entranceway and creating another entranceway for the public to go through is, uh, our residents who are, a lot of old residents are very concerned about the security and crime issue. And we're just telling you, we don't want.
Thank you. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Herzig. Uh, if you're both gonna speak, I need a card from each of you. You can fill it out after. Just you. Okay? Okay. You'll have three minutes. Please come to the microphone. I think I'm echoing.
Hi, my name is Sarah Herzig and I really didn't prepare anything for today, but I just, um, agree very much with Mr. Gordon that we live in the Brook Farm neighborhood and we do not want in any way for the new park to encroach into our property. We have a fencing there that is constantly being cut. We've had so much vandalism in the neighborhood. Our HOA has spent a lot of money fixing our fence. So that is something that we, a majority of our neighborhood is one hundred percent against it. We like that we have one, one way in and out. Our security is fairly tight and we want to keep it that way. Um, the other thing I want to bring up is just at a time when everything is going up. Food, clothing, services, everything. Is this really the time to be increasing our taxes in order to pay for all of these parks? We have a beautiful park, Brook Run Park. It's absolutely lovely. I've used it on many occasions. It has never been busy. So it seems to be fairly underused. So why are we going to spend all this money to make all these walkways and pathways that potentially won't be used, but will in turn, the only thing that will happen one hundred percent is our taxes are going up to support something that a majority of people don't seem to want. So I just don't know if there is a way or a mechanism where we can change the plans and maybe get a vote out again and get more input from the people who are actually paying for it. That's it. Thank you.
Peter Fritz, please.
Hi, I'm, uh, Peter Fritz. Thank you for your time and, you know, tabling the Vermont part for an open discussion today. We appreciate that.
Could you lean in just a little more? Sorry. I'm sorry.
There's a feedback over here.
Right.
Yeah, I put a photo in front of everybody. I'm here to speak for some folks that couldn't make it tonight. One of the issues with the Vermont Park property is when it rains extremely hard, you get a giant, what I'll call, what looks like a lake. It's bigger than the size of this room, probably at least knee deep. The schematic that's been put together doesn't take into contemplation drainage of a massive amount of water right now. That water goes behind into the village mill properties. Um, and those folks, you know, their properties are lower, so they're worried about with a park, a lot of erosion. Uh, and because they couldn't be here, they asked me to, you know, give you a photo so you can see it. So thank you. I also just want to remind everybody, you know, at the prior meeting, we gave a petition. Hundred and sixty-two people signed against the, the pathway and concerns about the park. Thank you and you all have a great night.
Thank you. That concludes the public comment cards I have. There will be another session of public comment at the end of the meeting. Uh, next up is a presentation. Brent, are you introducing or no? And also, will you check the technology before? Um, because I think I'm having feedback. I'm having feedback too. One second.
He's come to the speaker. Yeah, let's see if we can turn that on. Where is the, that is? That's the mic. Can you see it? There it is. Yeah, there you go. I just, you got it.
All right, I think that got it here, maybe. I muted the speaker on the laptop, so I don't know if that got it. Okay, let's try that. All right, so, um, as requested by council, uh, part of our, uh, reoccurring series of our nonprofits coming to report for you guys, uh, tonight. Noel Ross is here from Dunwoody Preservation Trust. She's gonna be talking a minute about how, uh, they are programming the Donaldson Banister property and their plans for upcoming programs and events at that site. Let me see if I can share screen real quick. You guys have that on your monitor? All right. Yep. Put that over. Oh, there it is. There it is. They keep changing how everything's. There we go. All right.
Madam Mayor, City Council, and community members, thank you so much for having me here today. I'm Noel Ross. I'm the Executive Director of Dunwoody Preservation Trust. DPT started in nineteen ninety-four when Lindbergh and Joyce Amaker saw a problem of our railroad section houses being demolished to create new buildings. And rallied together with their love of historic preservation to save the Cheeks' Brule House. The Cheeks' Brule House, which is commonly called the Dunwoody Farmhouse, uh, was built in eighteen eighty and is a landmark for Dunwoody. So much so that we use it in our, um, in our logo and you use it on your seal. Uh, DPT since then has gotten the Cheeks' Brule House as well as the Donaldson Banister Farm on the Georgia and National Historic Register. We manage three historic cemeteries. The New Hope Cemetery, Stephen Martin Cemetery, and the Woodall Cemetery. We partnered with the city to, um, rehabilitate the Donaldson Banister Farm. We host lemonade days every year and we offer educational programming. The Donaldson Banister Farm has come a long way since our partnership with the city. Uh, DPT alone has, has put forward over a million dollars in rehabilitation. And since getting to have our offices there, we ha- host a camp, Camp Flashback. It's, we're coming up to our fifth year. History Alive, we have every other month, uh, lectures on historic, um, events. We host a farm-to-table dinner in September. We host apple cider days and classes and community events. As with everyone, we've had our challenges. Inflation and supply chain issues certainly did impact us as well. Um, specific to the Donaldson Banister Farm, we have water management issues that are quite challenging and because of those, we are not able to restore the blacksmith shop, the commissary, or the wash house that we have on the property until they're properly handled. And it's eroding our driveway and some of our property. Um, in addition, um, we are not able to hold our, um, camp in storm-safe areas to increase our numbers. So we are limited to our one-eighty for the summer. I think our biggest concern and challenge is our name recognition, which we are working on to make sure that people know who we are. Um, people don't understand what we're providing, um, to our community, which is a real shame. So I hope that we can work together to do better with that. On the flip side, we've had an incredible year in twenty-twenty-two. We had an amazing lemonade days with incredible attendance because of amazing weather. We were able to have forty-four private events at our facility, which was a record for us. We were able to return to our long farm table for our farm-to-table dinner. We continue to host our every other month historic lecture series, um, History Alive. We had five full weeks of camp with a hundred and eighty campers and we'll do that again in twenty-twenty-three as we've already sold out. We have our apple cider days with three sessions of a hundred and fifty people per session available in the meadow at the Donaldson Banister Farm. Um, we started having a game night in the fall, uh, monthly, uh, program, which is really exciting because it is a true partnership with you. Um, we hosted on Saturday night, which is a tremendous time for, um, event rental. So because of our partnership with you, we're able to host it at the North Shalaford Annex and that's been a great way to gather new people into our community. Um, we've been restoring New Hope Cemetery. We start, we have a three-phase process, um, and phase one was completed in twenty-twenty-two. Um, addressing the most hazardous monuments. And we had our afternoon tea sold out and it's getting great press being published in two website magazines. The Dunwoody Diorama is a nineteen-foot, uh, wooden sculpture that is in process right now in Shambly with Tom Williams and will be uh, set up at the Donaldson Banister Farm on the barn. And we are really excited as that ribbon cutting will be in the spring sometime. And we'll bring lots of people to our park.
Noel, sorry to interrupt, but do you want to tell, okay, so I'm still echoing. Do you want to tell people, um, where, where the wood came from?
Oh, sorry. Yes, I can go. Um, the wood is, if you look at the top left picture, is from a tree that fell down, or I'm sorry, that died during the restoration of the Donaldson Banister Farm. And instead of just getting rid of the tree, we were able to salvage the wood and dry it, kill and dry it, and, um, found a sculptor, um, who is carving the history of Dunwoody uh, for the last thousand years, which is pretty remarkable. Thank you. Um, I, uh, so we have a lot on our agenda for twenty-twenty-three, much of the same things that I was just talking about. Camp Flashback will be back. Uh, History Alive will continue every other month. Our game nights will continue every month. We are starting a new series this year, the Evening Education Series. Um, we started in January with wine tasting and cheesemaking. Uh, and it's taking some of the elements of our Camp Flashback experience, the historic things and making them fun and exciting for an adult, um, community. So I hope you'll join us on those. Uh, we will have lemonade days back at Brook Run in April. Our annual tea, of course, will be a part of the parade. Uh, our farm-to-table dinner will have some new exciting flair to it this year, but it will be back in September. Apple cider days in November. We will host an open house at the Cheeks' Brule House sometime in the year and we'll have Light Up Dunwoody as well. Uh, in exciting stuff for twenty-twenty-three, we've just hired a new curator at DPT, Vanessa Blanks, and she is going to be taking our artifacts and our stories that we've all shared and that DPT has been holding on to and creating a museum um, of all of this. So we're really excited to see where that goes. Uh, I've already mentioned the Adult Evening Series. Um, with our ARP money, thanks to the city, we will be able to have a traveling trunk uh, that can go to our neighboring schools and share our local history. We will have field trips, uh, as well at the farm, which we are really excited to open up to. And I can't see the bottom one. And we'll have the diorama. Um, which will also be a wonderful sight for the field trips and for anybody coming to the farm and coming to the park. Dunwoody Preservation Trust has a staff of six people. I am the only full-time staff. Um, and what is so exciting about DPT and, and unique is that it's until five years ago was entirely volunteer-driven and it's still very volunteer-driven. Last year, our volunteer hours were logged at eighty-four thousand, two hundred thirty-five, which is quite remarkable. We're able to pull in our students, our scouts, uh, our volunteer base and the Dunwoody ambassadors. And that's been a wonderful partnership as well. Thank you very much for having me and, um, I, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Um. Okay. John, do you have any question? I'm just starting at this end.
Um, no, I truly just want to say thank you. Appreciate everything that the Donalds, that the, uh, Dunwoody Preservation Trust does. That's not embarrassing, trust me. Um, no, I really do appreciate everything that you'll, it's important and, um, the private events that you didn't name, things like the Boy Scout event that brings hundreds of families, you know, to the, not only to the farm, but through the farmhouse and shows the history of it, things like that. Those rentals really mean a lot to the community. So thank you for that. Um, I have a personal connection to the, um, event for the children, for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, I'm sorry, I can't speak today, for the, uh, 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 the summer program. Um, my son is dating a lovely young lady by the name of Kathleen Rivers, who is now was just hired to head that up and she's been a camp counselor there for the last three years and she's, um, just thank you. She's, she's great and I'm looking forward to visiting and seeing that whole program personally.
We're very excited to have her.
Yeah, no, so thank you. But overall, thank you for everything that you do. It's very important to the community.
Hi, Noel. I'm so excited that you're here. I think you have a little connection with some of these folks in city too, so that even makes it even nicer. But yeah, we're really excited that you're bringing the level of professionalism because it's so critical that our nonprofits have good boards and have a great executive director. So I'm, have full faith and confidence that you, you can implement with good guidance with your board. So thank you for being there. Um, I would just love, you know, I remember in the pandemic, uh, when you had, I went to a History Alive when everybody shut down and it was outside under the covered tent. Might have been a little bit before you showed, arrived, but it just, it was the first time I remember feeling like normal. I felt like a human being. I was sitting outside under the cover tent, outdoors and engaging with people and it was so valuable, invaluable. Um, just to feel of just, wow, I'm just sitting there having this great conversation and, um, again, the idea where I, I know we have a lot of under eighteen programming in the city, but it was, it's great to have that other option as well, uh, for people to educate. And I just love the topics that you offer and I wish I could may, wave a magic wand and have you have four times the amount of people that would show up for these things because they really are beneficial. Those pencil them in when you can. Um, and you get, and Starbucks is giving coffee, right? And, uh, and something else. Exactly. So that's great. I love it. Um, farm-to-table. I wish you could do it every month. I know, I just, I missed it last because I was, I was under the weather, but it was so beautiful. So I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm just here asking because I just love the things you do. Um, anyway, permutation, combination of doing tweaking a little bit and having a farm-to-table light, you know, where you just have people and out there with a, whatever. I'm just saying, just because I love the venue and outdoors. Um, the children's events that you do offer that are programmed and so on, do you offer, um, I think you do, um, a bit of for scholarships for the underserved and so on?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Thanks. And, um, the, the what we call the, the Dunwoody Farmhouse as well. I appreciate that you opening that up. It would be interesting to see how, um, that could be, um, understood by the public that's going by. I mean, you see the sign, but you kind of like, don't really know if it's something that the at-large public would be interacting with. Um, you know, its role or, you know, it's just, I know it's not open per se, but, right? I mean, I think you're kind of getting to that, uh, level. When we've eventually redo the Shambly Dunwoody corridor and, and, and the whole area, maybe we can kind of see how we can kind of make that more of a engaging so people could kind of maybe experience it better. So the only question I have is potentially considering partnering with the city, we, we don't have a historic district, right? We don't have a historic overlay for zoning because we don't have a per se. Here's these, this row of historic area that were here for two hundred years ago, et cetera. But we do have the one-off few here, few there. Um, and I know there's these informal signs around town you'll see, but they're not really designated. Can you tell me a little bit about, I, I know a little bit about them. You know the ones that have the signs?
Those are ours, yeah.
Right. Can you tell me about that and how you engage with that? And, and is it, is it, is it closed? Uh, does it offer any? You know, tell me about that, that little sign that you have.
The signage? The signage designates the historic sites in Dunwoody. It doesn't designate anything that you can engage with per se. I know that there is, um, an online tour that you, that was developed over the pandemic uh, that you can access on your phone and you can learn a little bit more about some of the, some of the buildings, but they're mostly private residences. So they're not able to be toured.
Right. Maybe we could, um, add that. I know it's just a, I know you got to keep your focus on what you could do. So people have an idea of what used to be here and what origins and what it looked like in the past. Um, and then from a, from a zoning and ordinance perspective, again, we don't have a historic district, but like Marietta has historic preservation, other cities do because they have historic districts. Um, I don't know if your board would be, ever be interested in just investigating if there's other cities sort of like us that is a built-out suburb, but might have onesie twosie if they offer any true historic preservation, um, or, or any kind of carrot, you know, i- i- you know, is there any kind of encouragement versus, uh, mandating and those kind of things?
My hope with the museum is that we bring in, um, our neighboring cities. Bring in Shambly, bring in Brookhaven, bring in Norcross, bring in Sandy Springs and, and, and make a museum that has a lot more relevance than just Dunwoody. Um, we have a powerful story, but they do too, and it's also not being told. And I think we can really create something amazing by partnering with them.
And again, thank you very much.
No, I just want to say thank you for your time. I appreciate it and the time spent on the presentation. I actually, you know what? Now I do have one question. It's, but it's more of a financial because you guys are doing more programming and you're obviously have more income coming in, but you also have more expensive, more expensive. because you guys are doing more programming and you're obviously have more income coming in, but you also have more expensive, more expenses. Where are you financially and are you planning any big capital stuff for the future?
Thank you for the question. Uh, we are able to add to our program partially because of the ARP funding. We are planning to um, begin more grant applications for, for our programs as well. And we are going to manipulate Farm to Table to be more of a fundraiser event for a few, for the future, um, in hopes to secure funds for the museum.
I've been fortunate enough to attend your sold-out Farm to Table Dinner and your sold-out wine tasting and cheese-making events, and those are indications that what you're offering is what people are interested in. So, I applaud you for the good job you're doing, and I can't wait to see what comes next.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add. I mean, everybody's already said some nice stuff. I remember when the uh, the Donaldson Banister Farm was private and had horses, and I really appreciate what you've done to kind of preserve and protect that. And just bigger picture, the city is very young, but the area here is not. And so, I think telling that story is important and protecting the history is important. So, I appreciate what you've done to, to further that.
Thank you.
Hey Noel, I'll just echo the thanks uh, for the presentation and for everything that you and the board and DPT does. You know, the thing that um, in my personal interactions with you or anyone else uh, associated, the board members, the volunteers, to a T, I mean, no, nobody's going through the motions. Everyone is actually, is very passionate about what they're doing. And uh, the, the preservation of the history of the city and these facilities is, is very important. And you can, it comes through so clearly when you have conversations with anyone associated with DPT, and that, that means a lot. It really does. So, thank you to everyone uh, in your team. And you know, I, I'll just use an example. Last year, I remember when we talked uh, when the diorama was just an idea and a plan and just how excited you were about it, and that, that got me excited. So, I can't wait to see uh, that uh, unveiled to the public in the near future. So, but thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for being here. This was awesome. I have just a couple of questions. One is for the camp and the need to have, you know, storm-safe space or whatever you called it. Is the upstairs of the building of the house available for that?
It doesn't offer as much space as you might think.
Okay, I know family live there, right? Um, families live there, but um, okay, I was just curious. The second thing was about the water issue. Is that a de-cab watershed issue or a stormwater management issue? And are we working on that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Um, there's actually state grants available for some of that, and maybe Brent or Eric or Jay or somebody, or whoever knows, Michael Smith, we can look into that. I don't know the scope of the work. And finally, besides the echo that I'm guessing we're still struggling to fix, um, so you could do it twice. Finally, my extreme gratitude for the amount of community building DPT is doing. Dunwoody Preservation Trust will say the name so that people will know. From Lemonade Days, which is a decades-long now tradition that families look forward to and um, the kids certainly look forward to in the community, to new things like the dinners and now the evening programs and the Saturday morning classes. Having the property available, which is, it is a public park for prom pictures and homecoming pictures, um, and how well-maintained it is, um, to now the newest program is uh, the game nights, which is just fantastic, right? Because all, most people are looking for a way to be part of a community. And so, for that, you have my deepest gratitude, and thank you, and let us know how we can help in twenty-three. Anybody else have anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't, hmm, sorry. But Eric, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we have the um, City Manager's Monthly Report, upcoming events for the Parks Department. There's a big, good list of items right there. One is March first, Women's History Month mural exhibit. Lemonade Days, as I mentioned a moment ago, is coming up April twentieth through the twenty-third. Uh, Food Truck Thursdays will begin uh, pretty soon in April, twenty-seventh of April. May twentieth Kids to Parks Day, May twenty-ninth is a Memorial Day Ceremony. June second picks in the park, and then June tenth is our Groovin' on the Green series opener. So, we have quite a few events that are coming up over the next few months. The um, the Seventh Annual Martin Luther King Day of Service saw five hundred volunteers involved in tree and daffodil planting, community garden cleanup, sprule art center cleanup, and invasive plant removal at the Dunwoody Nature Center. That's what we had over the last uh, month. Also, we have the Georgia Arbor Day Tree has been sourced. Annual plantings will be placed at the Dunwoody Library on February seventeenth, so coming up in just a few days. Public Works, we have requests for proposals to develop conceptual design plans for sidewalks from the city sidewalks priority list. They also have the Dunwoody, we get the Dunwoody Road Gas Main Relocation in March. And also, very exciting news and something we've worked on for quite a long time. It's the Ashford Dunwoody Road Path Phase One Construction is slated to begin later in March. Also, the Spalding Drive at Shambly Dunwoody Road, final landscaping has begun and will be completed in March as well. Also, the Spalding Storm Drain Upgrade, um, Asta, Astra Contracting completed the storm drain system in January, and will complete the site restoration by March with final paving to coincide with other paving later in the year. So, those projects are moving along nicely and coming to completion. In community development, the work at High Street continues without interruption. And additional retail tenants have been announced. The department has also re- uh, posted a request, uh, request for proposals for the household and electronics, household hazardous waste recycling events. Also, the next, almost next door, if you've noticed, the Quick Trip gas station is, is about to open there. The ci- uh, the CO has been issued, and also the footings for the new parking garage at Campus two four four are being poured as well. So, a lot of activity going on in the perimeter area. Staff is also within Economic Development. Staff is working with the Community Assistance Center to host a job fair. Also, the placemaking, Economic Development continues to lead creative placemaking efforts and coordinating with community partners. And so, some of those different items are listed within your report. As we move through the report, I'm going to skip over several items just in interest of time, but I am going to go to the Police Department and talk a little bit more about the license plate readers and what a uh, successful program that has been to help find missing persons, wanted persons. We've worked on that quite a bit, stolen autos. Also, great resource for solving crime. We've used that in several of the issues lately in the city. I, I can't, it's hard to reimagine life without the license plate readers, but it is a great resource for our police officers to have, even a hit-and-run case, stolen tags, things of that nature, all can be part of that program. Pretty robust report from the Police Department, so read that at your convenience, as well as the Finance uh, Monthly Report for December two thousand and twenty-two can be found. It's online, but there's also a direct link within your report that goes through that. We have several RFQs that have gone out, Wrecker Services for the Police Department, Engineering Design Services for North Schallerford Road. We also have our local safety, local road safety plan has gone out. And also notice of intent to award uh, to Blount Construction Company for the resurfacing for our um, roads for next year. Blount has been with us for numerous years now, has done excellent job on resurfacing our streets. So, we were very happy with their um, re- redo for the next several years for re- uh, repaving our streets. Municipal Court, al- always busy. Um, four hundred and eighty-five cases were disposed of last month. Twenty-eight cases have been reset. I will take this moment to brag again on that department and how efficient they operate, and they have, we have an excellent staff right here in the courts uh, that occurs every, every week, several times a week. Also, we have in the first quarter of the year, Human Resources is preparing the total compensation statements for all employees. This is something we try to do on an annual basis to show the employees, not just salary, but what your complete benefit package is. It's something that we want to be sure that we show everybody because we're in such a competitive market right now for employees. And the city did fill another police officer position, so there's only a few positions that are, remain unfilled at this point. And we have several good candidates in the pipeline to fill those positions. I'm here, of course, as well as my staff, any members of the staff are present to answer any questions y'all may have on this report.
Thank you. Anybody starting Tom?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, just, I just have a couple of quick questions. The, you know, I'm real excited to see progress being made at Georgetown, on the Georgetown Gateway Project. However, I was a little discouraged to see the delay with Comcast, a five-week delay. And um, I know we're a little bit, there's not much we can do there, but the, the, I, it, how, how handcuffed are we going to be by that delay? Is, or is that something we could work around? Or there, is, or is that going to slow our progress?
Uh, let me get Ishri, Ishri to come up and talk a little bit more about that. He's got the more uh, specific information on that, on that delay.
Hey, good evening. Um, in regards to the delay, uh, there's some procedures that Comcast has to go through by state law um, with their fiber connections. Uh, they can't let loose their contractor until other utilities are off the pole. And once they let loose, they do have to give notice to the customers. I think, I can't remember off the top of my head, but there's X amount of days that they have to give notice to the customers before they can cut the um, the service to them. Uh, so that's part of the delay. Other parts of the delay include uh, material procurement on their end. I don't think it's going to delay the project that much. Uh, there, the contractor continues to move forward. Our main objective right now is to kind of button up from uh, where Peeler Road is all the way up to Chateau Drive and um, kind of button that up and finalize that area uh, before going and open ground on the other, from Chateau all the way down to Contillion. So, I don't, I don't foresee any major delays um, because of this holdup, but unfortunately, there's not much we can do. I mean.
And I understand that's, you know, it's a necessary evil that we have very little, if any, control over, but I was just curious how that might impact us. I know sometimes we can move, move things around and, and get some work done, but it is frustrating. And I wish there was, I, I don't know what a solution is on future projects, how we can better coordinate that with. And I'm not saying that we're not, that it's on our side, but that the, the utilities can better coordinate amongst themselves so that it's not a stop until, until someone does it, and then there's another delay, like they can anticipate that, okay, AT&T will be done on this date, so Comcast can start the ball rolling a few weeks earlier and be ready to start moving things on the poles right after that. So, I, and I know that's not something that we control. It's just frustrating that our projects uh, are delayed seemingly by utility relocation. So, it is a bit frustrating, but, but thank you for the update. I know it's not on, on our steps. You know, issue there. Uh, the other, the other thing that I, I found fascinating was the meeting with the Georgia State. And is there anything additional uh, we can share on that as far as, you know, future coordination with the, with the college? With the city, or is this just kind of a get-to-know-you meeting and hopefully start the conversation for future?
Right, it's, it's actually both, and, and we are working with them closely. We're working on it with them on a couple of different angles. But one of the angles was just to be sure that um, their teams introduced to my team to make sure we have those direct connections of who to talk to, if we have, if there's any issues that come up. And we told, we'd like to have more coordination. We're not here, we, we're very sensitive to, we've done, we're not here to interfere with their operations, but we would like to be more part of anything the college does and, and those things on, on that campus. That's a hu- as you know, it's a huge portion of the city in terms of the, the landmass.
It's a huge campus, uh, pretty much dead center in the city. Uh, obviously, it brings a lot of traffic through the city. But yeah, it always seemed like a, uh, in some ways, a missed opportunity that we can't coordinate with them on, on more things. Or even things as far as student internships and maybe projects or, or things in the community. So, hopeful, hopefully, that's a, I was encouraged to see that because I think that's a good relationship for us, for mutually beneficial to foster with the university. So, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
You took one of my two comments. I was going to ask about Georgetown as well. Uh, the other comment I have is just, like, you know, an, an observation looking through the police report and um, an email I got to today also sharing a story is, you know, we look at police for crime um, response, but there are also our first responders for first aid, and all throughout this are officers, you know, using Narcan, officers using AEDs and CPR, officers responding to people who are suicidal. And we have issues with the county and the ambulances, but we have control of our police, and I think they're doing a great job of helping our, our citizens out in that respect.
Hi, a question on the Veterans Memorial. I believe that the engraved bricks are moving, or they're going to be staying. Is there any thought to having it extend the offer to have people have engraved bricks since we're?
So, the, the bricks will remain on-site. They'll be incorporated into the new design and the walkway approaching the memorial. Uh, they're, they are available, um, whenever someone would like one. We have bricks there that we just take one out, switch it out when it's engraved. We don't get a lot of requests. Occasionally, they come up around Veterans and Memorial Day when we have the events. Um, but all someone needs to do is contact the Parks Department, and we can make that happen.
Okay, but I mean, it's a great thing we get advertised if we're, since we're in the revamping stage for that. Okay, thank you. And then um, regarding the anti-Semitic flyers that went through, assuming they're not a threat, a personal threat, and illegal in that way, is there a way that they're a nuisance? Is that?
Yeah, and then we'll have, it's the chief can come up. It's the chief here or? Okay, I couldn't see because of the column. And while he's coming up, I will say, oh, and just going back to the veterans piece for a moment. There are a lot of exciting, more, even more exciting announcements that are going to come up with that in, in the next few weeks. That we're working on Brent, and I've been working closely, and Brent actually had a meeting this afternoon on some other stuff there. So, it's a unique opportunity. Um, and the bricks is, that's a big part of it, and that's something I'm glad you brought that up to expand that. We really want to get the word out more for people to purchase those or be part of that program as well. Chief, I'm sorry, I wanted to, while you were coming up, I wanted to get that in.
It's all right. Um, in answer to your question, after conducting a thorough investigation and discussing this with District Attorney's Office and City Solicitor's Office, uh, there's no charge that we can make against them. So, free speech issue.
Not, I guess, I guess I'm thinking it's some sort of private property issue because it's been put on private property. There's nothing, nothing.
I, I hate messages, isn't a terroristic threat to a property owner?
No, if you read the um, flyers that were distributed, there's no threat in.
Can you explain the littering issue?
Sure. Uh, so um, you know, there's lots of uh, flyers thrown in people's driveways for various things, and we have, we cannot enforce one because of the content, because we don't like the content and not enforce the other. And so, it'd be a kind of a disparate uh, enforcement of the law and would could potentially get us jammed up legally.
What about if you have, you live in a private HOA neighborhood, private neighborhood, but it's not gated? Is, is that, does that HOA or property owner have any recourse?
I, I'm not an attorney. Uh, so I would, I would say probably not because of the free speech issue, but certainly, you know, you could consult your attorney.
That, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stacy, anything?
Yeah, one more question. I understand we can't charge them. Are we still going to try and find out who did it, just to be able to keep an eye on them?
We already know who did.
Fabulous.
Yeah, I mean, they posted a video online of them passing the flyers out, so we know it is.
Did you have other questions about?
No, but I do have other questions.
Yeah, about the, it's your turn.
Oh, yeah, okay, it's my turn. Um, question on just kind of a, no, you're good, Chief. I'm actually, I'm I'm kind of a point in the City Manager's Report, if we, I don't know if we want to change it or whatever. It's the De-Cab Veterans Memorial. It's actually the Veterans Memorial for all of De-Cap County, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, right, Brent? So, in, in the City Manager's Report, you put the Dunwoody Veterans Memorial, and I just want it.
We can modify that.
Yeah, we just need to modify because it is.
And I think Commissioner Patrick is going to help pay for some of the renovations.
So, I just want to make sure that we all know that it is the Veterans Memorial for De-Cap County, and that should, whenever we refer to it, that's how we should refer to it. Um, next question on that, though, I, we've, the destruct, construction documents have gone out. Am I just not remembering what the final design was going to be, or do we not have that, or?
So, all we've, we've had uh, is the renderings that were shared with council. The architect is working on the construction documents right now. The architect is working on the construction documents right now. They're about thirty percent done. We met last week with them um, to go through materials and supply chain issues and all that, but the um, the construction documents will come out hopefully when we see them.
So the construction documents are the actual final design?
Blueprints, yes.
The blueprints, okay. Cool. And then my next question. Jennifer alluded to it, but you'll probably know, working on the um, opening date for Two Bridges Park, do we have a a moving target?
Q one.
That's now.
It's not over yet. So we've had a, as y'all can imagine, rain delays on the site because of the constant rain every couple of days we have. Uh, the site is almost complete. Uh, they plan to have the porn place surfacing for playground uh, come in on the twentieth. Uh, and then we'll start landscaping after that. We have one small section of concrete that still has to be bored. Once all of that work is done, because that's how they're accessing the site, uh, but they are cleaning the site and getting it ready. Those last little bit of touches, so I'm leery of saying a date, but we are pushing hard to be done uh, by end of Q one.
Joe, your turn.
Yep, well, that was, that was one of my questions too. Um, I really do appreciate the police effort uh, and the do and work in the community. Um, I have a, a resident constituent. He lives over by Vanderland in the mornings. He wants to shout out, thank you to Officer Fam, Pam, right? Um, he said on December fourteenth, uh, this is a neighborhood twenty-five mile an hour zone, and I'll, I'll book in this conversation. It ties in what issue he's going to be talking about later, but twenty-five mile an hour zone and, and they're going forty miles an hour plus in this neighborhood zone and people are trying to walk to school and Officer Fam, he got, uh, he said he ticketed six people in front of his house the past hour. You know, forty miles an hour, December fourteenth, um, January twenty-seventh, he's out there again. It's like shooting fish in a barrel. That's what he said. So thank you for the police officers. On the one end, it's the enforcement. On the other hand, it's the engineering. And I want to, you know, work together to, let's make it so that you physically shouldn't be able to drive forty miles an hour in a residential zone, right? That's, that's my, where we want to get to, right? So I appreciate that, what we've got on the agenda there coming up later. Um, the police has gotten up polar plunge. Are we doing anything else? I could go to the Facebook page. I know you got great social media, but um, the upcoming events just shows the one in the polar plunge, but I have to imagine that we've got some other things scheduled in this community. I mean, I know you do coffee with the cops and we've, we've done a lot, you know, we've done a lot. You don't have to come up, Chief, it's fine. Look, you've done a lot. We've done active shooter. We've done the car safety. It's programmed, so you know, we're coming around the bend there. So thank you very much. Um, Eric, how are we coming on the Winter Chapel trees? We did get along the trailway, we did have the, um, are they going to be, I see it landscaping, is that going to be the plantings coming now on, along Winter Chapel with the multi-use path trail here? Is that like happening? Because we signed off, we signed off on it?
Yeah, there's an RFP and uh, we signed up on it, so they're going to be planting um, here soon. And um, we'll also be doing the lighting coming up shortly.
When are you, is it like?
Okay, it was a. Hopefully by March.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
It's going to move pretty quick. Um, the, the, the planning is already done. The, the RFP was for the installation.
Right. I was over there this weekend. It really is cleaning up. You know, it's coming along nicely. It's kind of like the other part of Georgetown, the northern end part of the, it's looking nicely. Thanks, Ishri. I don't think, oh, the Astridonley Path Phase One. Um, so that's literally, we're going to be like seeing something dirt uh, moving here too? I guess that should have been you. I should, I should have let you, Astridonley Path, I mean, when do we physically see some dirt moving on that one?
Uh, we're, we're thinking about March.
Like, March is a lot of stuff going to happen.
Kind of a lot of pressure on our.
It's, it's only been, you know, what, five years in the making?
Yeah.
Conversation here.
Could have been a little bit sooner, but with the weather delays, our contractor, um, that was selected for that project is finishing up some other um, okay. Projects before they come out.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's exciting news. Um, thanks. And Eric, that, I'm good for you. Thank you so much. Um, Eric, this was back on, um, you spell, gonna come back up, the jet ferry streetscape that we're going to try to design uh, and put in that was uh, added to the twenty twenty-two budget, right? See, I, I knew.
There you go.
Pardon you, pardon me. Sorry, sorry, Ishri. You know, we were gonna just, but no one responded to the RFP. It was too small of a project, right? To define the streetscape of that look and feel for that little part. I'm not, you know, and I, I, again, coming from a, can't we just take file save as, here's Dunwoody Village, here's part of the PCID. And this is what we're, the sidewalks still look like. This is what the street should be designed along and bring in Sandy Springs to work on that triangle. Um, are we getting any movement at all?
Yeah, there's, there's some movement. Uh, we do have a contractor or a consultant on board. That's a, we negotiated a, a fee and a scope with them. Um, it's a very small fee, very small scope. Uh, but part of that triangle is also part of a wayfinding sign plan. Um, so we're planning to put a uh, wayfinding sign in that triangle and do some landscaping around it too. But going down Jet Ferry, there will be some um, recommendations from a consultant.
So I'm looking at seeing, so when can we get to a, comes up to the council for adoption of defining this? Here's what the street widths look like. This is a, a pedestrian facility, bike facility. It's a sidewalk width. It's a, it's the landscape buffer. Uh, you know, I'd like to get that design out there because if we have a new, if something happens, land disturbance here comes, well, we can just make up something and ask him for something, but it'd be great to have something on the books.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the timeline of that project, but it's, it's, like I said, it's a minimal scope. Um, so I can't imagine it'll take more than a couple of months, once it's uh, ready to go, when, once we get NTP on it.
Do you have a swag estimate, Eric, at all? It's first half of this year? I mean.
I'd say probably.
Yeah, we, we gotta, yeah, we have to coordinate.
Yeah, okay. All right, okay, all right. Thanks, Ishri.
For sure.
John, go ahead.
Eric, I'd like to thank you for the uh, monthly report. Very comprehensive. Uh, really would like to thank all the uh, department directors. I'm sure they write it.
Yes.
Chapter by chapter. So thank you to all of them. Um, really just want to give a special kudos to all the police officers. They're the ones saving lives. Nothing against the rest of the employees. They all do a great job too, but when I read as a it's already been mentioned, the use of Narcan, the CPR, the use of the AED. Um, these people are saving our citizens' lives and they just need to be thanked. Uh, we just got an email today about another, uh, you know, AED being used again to this week. Thank you. Dealing with suicide threats, numerous suicide threats this month. Um, thank you. Just, and then on top of that, we had the shooting at the mall. The professionalism and the way that was handled was just stellar. So for that, I just want to say thank you, Chief. You've come up to the podium, but thank you for all you do. Thank you, thank your officers, because again, they're the ones saving lives every day, it seems like. So thank you.
Appreciate that. And I just want to say thanks to the council who uh, allowed us to get new AEDs last year with the ARPA money. Updated our AED, so that was very helpful. And we appreciate the, the support of the council, which gives us the equipment we need to do our jobs. So thank you very much.
And Chief, if you ever need Narcan, I have a contact that I want to make sure that, that you ever think you're running low or, or need to get some, I know where to get some. So please make sure that that's a priority. I have some at home. Folks, I have, I have Narcan at home. So I'm just telling you, if you need Narcan, if there's ever a shortage, if there's a, whatever it is, please, I, I think it's important. Thank you.
Um, okay, don't leave. Come back. Sorry. Everybody else? Okay, so it's February. I presume that we are still losing our co-responder in March.
So we, we are, but I just got a proposed contract uh, from the DeKalb CSB. Today, we've been working with the DeKalb CSB uh, to get that and haven't had a chance to review it totally yet. But the proposal is, and what, what they're trying to do is they were trying to do a CSB program for kind of the cities in the south, DeKalb, and then for us up here. Brookhaven has their own, uh, it's an employee. And uh, and so they were looking at contracting with us, Shambly and Doraville. Uh, Shambly was with the same group we were with, and they've decided to hire that person as an employee for the city. So they've, I asked them to put a proposal together for us in Doraville and they provided that. And I'll be discussing that with the city manager. We hope to have something uh, to bring forward to the council.
So from other mayors, I don't know if you've looked at the money yet. You may not like it. Um, based on what I'm hearing from other mayors, so in DeKalb. I'd like us to look at the in-house option as well, just in case. It just, if you and Eric could work out.
Sure.
Obviously, we're going to defer to your recommendation because you're the professional. I just know from some of my peers in DeKalb that they weren't thrilled.
Yeah, the, the number's not too bad. I didn't see the number. It's comparable to what we had in the previous contract. Um, I think the challenge with uh, at least from my research and uh, we had a class on this uh, at the Georgia Chiefs Conference recently is uh, that person has to maintain all their certifications. And that because it's medical, it involves a lot more. And then the city kind of takes on that responsibility and liability as opposed to a, a separate entity that does that, uh, being responsible. But we'll, we'll certainly take a look at it and I'll work with Eric on that.
Um, and just as a reminder, we're fifty-two thousand people and Doraville's ten, but Doraville's the end of the line for the MARTA and has issues that we may not have. So just if we can make sure that we're because we are in a position, I believe, or council will make sure we're in a position that the department has the supports they need, because when you read the report from last month, it's almost like you, in a perfect world, if we had a responsive EMS system, there would be an EMS vehicle that was staffed with a psychiatric nurse and a clinical social worker that would join you in these calls. And then once you're sure the people are, the professionals are safe, y'all can go resume your policing business. And the medical professionals would be available to tend to the people that are struggling. And so maybe one day we'll get there. Also, please let um, the officers know that we are more than aware of the EMS response problems, which I sense are getting worse, though I'm not a hundred percent sure the data supports that totally. Um, and we understand what they are struggling with. And we appreciate the creativity in reaching out and finding other solutions when a vehicle simply doesn't come.
Will do.
And so thank you. And again, let, please let us know if there's anything you need. That is, your, your public safety is our number one responsibility.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mayor, may I just?
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, Chief, one more thing. The AJC today had a nice little article about the city of Brookhaven, who also uses check come nine-one-one, just like we do. Where they're the first ones in the state using a program where the officers on the street can hear the nine-one-one call.
Live nine-one-one.
Yeah, so you've seen it. Is it, I'm not sure if it's good or bad, but uh, Brookhaven used it. It sounded like it was a nice thing, so I'm just wondering.
So we're, we're exploring that as well. Uh, we've looked at the, the cost of it. And the, frankly, the, you know, the c- cost is not too bad. It's, you know, is there enough value there for us? Because a lot of calls, they already happened. You know, we don't need it. We don't need that ability to listen to the call, but then there's cases where we do. When there's something actively going on like the shooting at the mall, for example.
Correct.
People are calling in, the officer can hear it while they're on the way there, as opposed to having that delay of, of translation to the dispatcher and then the dispatcher to us. So we are looking at that.
Well, I appreciate it. Just it was a uh, eye-opening thing. And like you say, if there's value and the cost is right, and you know, the cost may not matter if the, if it, if the services are right, depending if there's a you know, win-win situation. So thank you for looking into that. I just wanted to make sure that was a way available.
Thank you. Anybody else? The Georgetown delay, sorry, Ishri. Is I don't, I have to be honest. I live over there and I drive it so much that I'm not even conscious of what changes and what doesn't. But the, in the first phase, which is where we are now, are all the plates coming up soon? Or I don't think they're all up yet.
Yeah, I think there's only two remaining.
Okay.
They're, they went to go pull one of the plates most recently and found out that the newly installed water line has this minor leak in it.
Minor.
But uh, they're fixing it. Um, but yeah, the plates are planned to be removed soon.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, next is a consent agenda, which is just one meeting's minutes. Anybody have any discussion?
We'll approve.
Move by John.
Second.
By Rob. Any discussion? Or Tom, it was Tom, sorry. Y'all are so fast. Um, any discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Andrew, you are up next. Yeah.
Good evening. So for this one, it's the procurement of technology equipment. The request is for a network refresh and all the equipment that is necessary to do the network refresh. The technology department, along with Inner Dev, put a list of equipment that we needed to upgrade and a complete list for the network um, refresh. And that totals four hundred and twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars. Five hundred and twenty-one, I apologize, and seven hundred and eight dollars. And it's through multiple vendors.
Um, this is an action item. Does anybody have any questions?
We'll do approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon, you're probably supposed to read, probably not me.
The next item is approval of changes to the position allocation and compensation chart. Deputy Chief Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as uh, not a bad problem to have, but as we inch closer to becoming fully staffed, um, our allocation chart changed last year when we um, added two sergeant positions. But what we had to do is we just took two of our sworn positions. So all I'm asking is that one of those positions was in the investigations division. Um, and they were at nine. All we're doing is, or all I'm asking, just as a formality for this allocation and compensation chart is to move one of those CID positions over to the police officer positions. So that would move detectives down to eight and police officers up to thirty-seven.
Okay. Any questions? Joe?
Maybe this is for Ken or Eric. Would this item necessarily need to be approved by council? Or could this just been done internally?
Pulling it back up. The um, the compensation chart. Yeah, right. It, but what we have to do, the chart itself has to be adopted by the council. The headcount piece, you know, which is part of that, I'm pulling, scrolling through this, some of that HR always has us go through the council, the way the, the way we're set up, basically, the way our charter is. Y'all have to approve the positions and the overall budget, because it goes back to budgeting. Now, if you're doing something intern, if we're doing something internally with a position in a department, you know, I have that authority to a degree, but it has to stay within the budget. But when we're talking about headcount, it has to go before y'all as well. Yeah, it does. It does.
Interesting, uh, headcount, uh, net, net, but.
John.
Right, um, was that, was that the only? Yeah, okay, that was it. Thank you.
John.
Yeah, thanks Deputy Chief. Um, there's been requests for detectives in the past. We've authorized them. I just want to make sure, are we downgrading any current detectives?
No, we're not. We, we've actually, since we've been understaffed this, for this long, um, they've been operating at about seven um, capacity. So right now, uh, we've got, with the approval um, of this chart, we'll have one opening. So we just filled one uh, last, the end of last year, and then we'll have one more opening. So we're slowly starting to fill these positions. Uh, we're going to open up one of our crime response team positions coming up this Wednesday. So right now, no, they've been able to handle.
So it's been a vacant position and right now we're just looking to convert it from a detective to a police officer.
Uh, correct, because um, since the, the need for the sergeants is going to outweigh that position in the investigation division. So that's why we're just absorbing it over to the sworn side.
No, I, I appreciate the information. I just want to make sure that your staff appropriately were needed. And if you need to come back and modify it again, please let us know. We trust you. I trust your judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, John.
And, and Barry Dunn's in here, right? They're looking at operations organization, competition structures as well, correct?
That's correct, sir.
So we'd expect once they'd have the report, we'll be doing some more conversations.
Absolutely. They're pulling all the stats, um, the ca- their caseloads and all that, and they may come back. You need a lot more.
Exactly. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. So I know we're inching closer to full staff. How, how close is that? How small is that inch?
Uh, so right now, um, we are, we have four sworn positions uh, open. And right now we have several positive candidates in the background. So.
Wonderful.
It, it, it's, uh, the officers are seeing the relief and it's nice when we, when we pull up a uh, you know, a riding schedule and we see all the W's, which show that we have that many work. And it's just, it's a safety issue. It's a comfort issue for, you know, uh, us knowing that they're out there and they have each other's back.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody on this end? Nope. Okay. So echoing what you heard on this end from John is, is that I know we have the Barry Dunn study and we'll get that data and then budget cycle stuff will start in a few months as well. So um, just to be cognizant of. So just to be cognizant of making sure, and if something comes up before, obviously, Eric, we're here. For that. So this is an action item.
Approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is an ordinance. So man, chapter twenty signs of the city of Dunwoody code of ordinances.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Filling in for Allegra, who was before before you all this topic about a month ago. I'll I'll keep it quick, but I'm available for questions you may have. We had a slide here about the issues that were raised at the first read for this. First one was about the coverage of windows to limit that to. Public art only. And we we looked at that. We have sort of our attorneys that have advised against this strongly because of the reason. That it would be in some way, shape or form, it would be a free speech issue because we're prioritizing some content over other content. So it's pretty much like we were advised anything sort of where we need to look at it to see what it is, is not eligible use sort of for this. So. This we we won't be able to limit like this type of signage to to public art only, like as a sort of matter of general sign regulation. We have sort of this for like general public art. That goes through the Public Art Commission that were categorically exempting a signage. But for anything that was sort of considering signage and regulating a signage, we're not able to prioritize. Specific avenues of speech over others. There was a second item, a question for whether we have. A definition for what a dilapidated sign sign is that that we didn't answer at the last meeting and we do. And we have that in existing code. We're not proposing to change it, but but that that is included, in fact. And that has been working well so far. There was a third question about a light show protected onto a wall and how that would be regulated. And we looked at that sort of in a little bit of detail. As sort of a corner case scenario and. It would not be permitted currently because of illumination. Like we have sort of a. A positive way of regulating things, but we're saying kind of like you can do things that are in this specific list of items. So we have four different illumination types, and this doesn't happen to be one of them. So that would currently be not 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 be allowed. As part of the sign code. And then there was a question about. The master sign plan process, if we're opening up sort of avenues, so unintended sort of avenues for. Potentially billboards or for digital signage. As part of this and. We looked at our language, we put specific sort of specific sentence in there that specifically excludes. Illumination types or EMCs that are not allowed. So if something is not allowed in a specific district. Then it also cannot be allowed through the master sign plan process. So we put additional language in there. To safeguard us. From that specific scenario from happening. Otherwise, like the. The proposed changes are the same that you've seen. At the January meeting and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. I think I started. Does anybody have questions on this end? Tom?
There we go. Oh, there you are. Can see behind Paul. Thanks, Paul. Yeah, I still have a question on. Section twenty dash thirty five, which is the the coverage in the window. So before I get to my concerns, basically, the the red line. Window signs and vacant space can occupy more than thirty percent of area of a window pane. So. There's no cap there. So in essence, the entire window could be covered in signage. So before I get into my concerns, what is the reason? For allowing this? Is there?
And this is for this is for the vacant properties?
Yes.
It's that there's sort of interest in in advertising and. For for vacant properties sort of to to advertise those and. And that we have this restriction there that it can only cover so much partially. To allow for people to sort of see into the stores. Like partially sort of for pedestrian oriented spaces to to make those available and not sort of close those off. But that that sort of that that sort of need isn't there for vacant spaces. So we have. You know, as as opposed to seeing sort of a drab space on the inside, we we think that this is not. Not significantly worse. Yeah.
So my concern here is because we can't regulate. The content of this is, well, first of all, I'm concerned of having just a giant window pane saying space available. And, you know, it doesn't send a good message when there's a bunch of windows showing how vacant everything is. And I I have concerns about that and how it would look, but. Perhaps a bigger concern is because we can't regulate. What can be on these signs? What's to? Preclude a a property owner from essentially turning their buildings into giant billboards and putting advertising in the windows or other content that we might not want. Is there anything that I'm missing that would preclude them from doing that?
The I mean, this would be for vacant spaces only.
Correct.
So. You know, if we stay successful, fingers crossed, sort of in our commercial districts, we hope that we're not having. A ton of sort of commercial, commercial vacant space. And you're thinking of it more as a like someone purposely leaving a space empty.
I'm not necessarily leaving it empty, but if we have, let's say there's an empty three floors on a on a high rise building, it just happens to be, you know, close to an interstate or close to a big road. And taking all of the windows on those three floors and putting clings in the windows and making it in essence, a giant billboard. I mean, I. From as I read this, there would be nothing that would prevent them from doing that. And that would be a concern for me.
Yep, that. Yep, notice. Yeah.
How do we work around that, other than just striking this new red line out or adding some sort of limits to what they can put in the windows?
The. Yeah, this would be sort of the consequence sort of associated with this, that if they would be allowed to do that. We we sort of could hypothetically, we could limit it to ground floor only, or we could hypothetically limit it to. There's sort of just like specific, specific locations. Yeah, so that 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 would be potential alternatives to get at some of those concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I share your optimism that hopefully vacant space is not a problem in the city, but. We know right now the market it is and. The way I read this, I think the potential. Problems this creates outweigh the potential benefits. And that's other than that, I don't have any really big issues.
Point of information, Paul, can you read that section in twenty dash thirty five paragraph one? Because I think it is only for the ground floor.
So which one are you referencing? Twenty dash thirty five, the. The painted signs, decals, or other signs located directly inside on the window and the door of the ground floor of a. Okay, so we have that in there. So that would be sort of for like the the building sort of overlooking the highways. Where the entire building would sort of become a canvas more or less. Yep. So so it is in fact limited to the ground floor space.
But but the same concept, so the the big up on the on the higher floors, but the same thing could happen if there's a. A building where the entire. First floor is vacant, it could in essence become a. A giant billboard. And I I just don't know if that's. Something that's good or not, but it's my own personal opinion. Just in relation to what Tom had asked, I remember one of the earlier earlier meetings, I said, you know, Don and Buckhead on that triangle on Rosel Road, Peachtree. They did that, right? They did this interior. They're running out the building. And they're just having a big illuminated LED billboard that's set back ten feet from the window. Now, we have code that would not. That that couldn't happen in our.
So in Buckhead, it's I think it's really close behind the window. That I went there and looked at it. So we have language in there. That states that it has to be set back a certain number of feet, and I'm blanking sort of on the exact number. But we're we're like. Because it's it's sort of. You know, and at some point, something on the inside of a building is generally not regulated. Like for the same code, but then we're saying that something that is sort of so close behind the window. That is in fact sort of, you know, functioning as a sign is considered a sign. To prevent exactly that that specific scenario. So I went down there to to look at that. And then we put language in there to prevent that.
Okay. Um. John, you have anything?
No, I mean, this is they're bringing thus tweaks that we did the sign program a year ago. They have experience of various things that have crossed their paths and they are tweaking it to fix the things that were missing previously. I I've gone through and I haven't seen a whole lot that jumped out at me that was, you know, unusually, you know, onerous.
So the purpose, I think, of what we're trying to do in the window thing is to get public art in vacant buildings, right? Because we've seen it in other cities, quite frankly, often in downtowns where there's a lot of vacancies. Which kind of is us sort of in perimeter center anyway, potentially. And so one thing, because because I don't want us. To be billboards and depending on where a building is and what's happening with the building. The value is a billboard, unfortunately, right now could potentially be more than commercial real estate rent. It's a little frightening, but we don't really know what's happening. And so. I think we should either remove this. Fix for now, or is there a way to? Because, you know, I envisioned it like in Dunwoody Village. You know, where there's an empty store and they take one pane and they put a piece of art in it. Is there a way to limit? In any building setting, the amount of window that can be fully covered or anything?
We have that right now, but like up to thirty percent can be covered. That's sort of the existing. If you don't make this change, it's limited to thirty percent.
Right. Each window pane, right? So is there? Yeah, I don't know how to fix this because I am really concerned. Just where we are currently with potential vacant space. I think it. Might be better to. If you want us to adopt the rest of it, we can strike this fix and then revisit it. Try to figure out a way to do what our ultimate goal is, or we can pause on the whole thing. You tell me your preference.
Can I can I ask a quick question about this? So let's just say that we adopt it as is.
With the changes.
Yeah, with with doing nothing tonight. And then we end up and we do have a worst case scenario where. Tom's worst case scenario comes to fruition. And then we change it again. Are those? It's too late. That's that's those are my questions. So then let's just.
Mayor, can I ask a question? Paul, if if they adopt all the changes but this change or any of the other changes in any way going to hamper what you're trying to do? By these other edits?
No, I think that would be our preference. It's like to to take this one out, adopt the rest of it. And then we can sort of check with with Michael Starling's team on sort of how to get at that in a different way.
So is that just? Is that just change two that's being edited out? In other words, if there were a motion to approve the changes except for the change that we don't want to make right now. Is that referred to as change number two, or does it need to be referred more specifically?
It's not. It's.
No, it's like, I think it would have to be referenced separately, kind of like, because it's not one of those listed changes.
Well, can you tell them? Because somebody's gonna make a motion and I want to make sure.
It's like that that change in like section twenty dash thirty five. Which assigns exempt from permit requirements and then number one over there. So like the the red line there.
The other possibility is, is you bring it back to we defer for two weeks. And you bring it back without this language in it, whichever is easier from the legal perspective and your perspective. You just tell us because it's only two weeks.
Yep, we're happy to do it either way. Like I I think it's just like this one section that we need to strike out. So someone would have to make a motion. Then and exempt this change in section twenty dash thirty five. Number one.
Okay, that's it. Okay, all right. Anybody have any other questions on the rest of it or any of this? Okay, this is an action item and it needs amending.
Then yeah.
Yeah.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Tom, second by Rob. All right, and then.
And then move to amend.
Wait, wait. Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
Move to amend to strike the revisions to. Section twenty dash thirty five. Is that sufficient?
One, I think you have to say one.
Paragraph one.
Paragraph one.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Second.
All right, there's an amendment on the floor made by Tom, seconded by Rob. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Now we have an amended that pass unanimously, Sharon. Now we have an amended motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, Sharon. Thank you, Paul. I'll when you're back. And Sharon will need to read this before.
The next item is a resolution for a temporary moratorium on the acceptance of new applications for business licenses. Or special use approval, permitted use approval, or building, land, disturbance, site plan and design review, or other permits and licenses for cannabis businesses.
And and this is sort of a follow up on on something that we had a couple of months back. Where we issued a moratorium through March eighteenth, twenty twenty three, and have sort of companion piece on the discussion items. Later in the agenda, what we're asking for right now is to extend that moratorium through September fourteenth of twenty twenty three. So for an additional. Hundred and eighty days to allow us to sort of draw up. Regulations for medical cannabis dispensaries. And then I'll have that discussion item in in a bit to give you an overview where we stand.
Okay. This is an action item. Does anybody have questions on the moratorium?
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further questions or discussions on the moratorium? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Hey, this is me, but I think I'm going to need someone to share. From because I don't have an ability to share. And actually, I don't think we planned this very well. Is it on the computer, Jay? Yeah, you can just go through the website. If you just go to the city website.
It's in the agenda.
Yeah, sorry, guys. In the meantime. While he is Jay's pulling it up. Council members suggested that, given what happened here in Dunwoody last week. That we reinforce the message that I think we've always tried to practice. That we are a community that values civility and that council should model the hate that. Was spread through our community. We could go Sunday morning early is not reflective of who we are. And that we believe as a council that we can disagree and disagree civilly. And that there's a lot of data out there that shows that incivility. Is a major concern of people across the country when they think of when they think of government in general. And so. We just thought that this program just became available from the Georgia Municipal Association like two weeks ago. And we thought we would be early adopters, which you'll hear later. I don't always like to be an early adopter, but. Yeah, so anyhow, this is one. There's a resolution that. We will submit to Georgia Municipal Association. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Just reinforcing our core missions. I should read it. Okay. The way we govern ourselves is often as important as the positions we take. Our collective decisions will be better when differing views have the opportunity to be fully vetted and considered. All people have the right to be treated with respect, courtesy and openness. We value all input. We commit to conduct ourselves at all times with civility and courtesy to each other. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, it's, it's funny because when I meet on people one-on-one. Yeah, you can co- connect, you can click, you can just have a good conversation one-on-one. And then there's this dynamic of we run into each other at, at the grocery store or in the mall or walking around. And after you see these quote-unquote public events, you know, we're, we're all neighbors here. And I, I run into people throughout and it's, it's, you know, it's life, how you react, right? And how we're up here. We, we have, we are the recipient as well of, of some things that happen in the city with, with the folks that come in here in these meetings. So it's tough for me at times, cause it's tough because I, I, I wanna, you wanna just kind of react and and then sometimes you just have to kind of not react. And so I appreciate what we strive to do. And maybe when we go into other, um, public engagements and we ask people, we can't demand that they, how they act, but it's how we act.
Yeah.
Um, and just kind of say, hey, guys, here's how we're gonna, do we all agree that we can have this engagement in a civil fashion? I think that would be, uh, we, we, we all deserve that. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move by.
Tom, second by Joe. And for everyone's reference, it was Councilman Lotenbacher who initiated the conversation. Thank you. Um, any further discussion, John?
Yeah, taking a look at the agenda this evening, I see that we have a one-page little slide from the Georgia Municipal Association, but we do not really have a resolution per se. And that, that we typically would pass and
I think it.
There's nothing in our packet.
Oh.
There's no resolution in our packet.
Okay, oh, cause it's on the, it's on the, oh, maybe it wasn't. It was on what I, wait. It's not in our packet, cause.
There's nothing in our packet.
Okay, if you want to defer it, we can. I thought it was in the packet. I was, I don't know what I was looking at.
For that to the people who approved the motion.
Um. Was so, it is on your blog. Oh, it's, it's, look, sorry, I was running off your blog this afternoon. Um, okay, so it's, so it's up to y'all. If you want to defer it for two weeks, we can with the resolution. I had the resolution, that's on me.
I, I think it ought to, personally, I, I think it ought to be in the packet.
Okay.
Since it's part of the record, not, not that I want to put this off, but just to.
Right.
Well, you're saying it, it's in the different link. If you click on the link, there's two links. If you click on the link, the one link, it does have it, it's in the
It's in there.
It's in the major, it's in the big, big link. If you click on the direct link, it's not. It is in one of the links. So it is out there.
It is.
You send an email out, you get the first link, it's just the agenda and you click on each item. And the second leak is the everything in one. It's in the second leak, everything. That's how John pulls it. Just try to get to it.
One link is the agenda and one link is the packet.
The packet, so it's.
The second link is the packet.
So it's in the packet. Right?
So it's in the packet. Wait, hold on. It's not.
It's the, the res- the, the pledge is in the packet, but the resolution itself is not in the packet.
Cause that's, so where did you get the resolution in your packet, in your thing? Did you pull it up yourself?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, all right. Okay, so if you'll just withdraw your motions, we'll put it on here two weeks, sorry. Just put it, it, I think it can be consent. I guess, two weeks, yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay. So you got that they withdrew their motions, right? Second. No, withdraw, uh. Yes. We have to move it for two weeks.
Yeah, for the record, I would say, withdraw my motion.
Right, so who was your second? Rob. Joe, Joe, do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Tom. And then we have to table it.
So you need a motion.
I need a motion to table it.
I moved to table the civility pledge pending completion of the resolution.
Right, which was complete on my computer. Um, and I need a second for his motion to table.
Second.
Second Catherine.
And one, one thing, my, my point of order, if I can, not so much on this, but if this was a planning and zoning, I'd want the motion to be to a date specific and time specific, because you're giving notes to the public. But I assume by the motion, we're just moving it to the next meeting.
Yes.
But if this was a planning and zoning, it would need to be more precise, just as point of order.
Okay, thank you.
I, I will clarify that. I, I am tabling it until the next meeting.
Okay. And Catherine seconds that.
Yes, I do.
Okay, all in favor? All right, any opposed? Hearing none, that um, passes. Next, I don't know who from, it's Richard. Sorry, it wasn't. And you can just go ahead when you're ready, because this is not an action item.
Good evening. Um, on January twenty-sixth, we received a letter from David Kirk uh, requesting that they table, uh, RZ twenty-two zero-two and SLOP twenty-two zero-two. This was the grub property case. Um, they are not moving forward at this time, so they asked to withdraw it without prejudice. So just wanted to let you all know that.
And we need no action, right? No discussion, it's done.
Right.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions? Okay. Next, Ginger.
Hello again. So this one is an approval request for the resolution to surplus technology, uh, equipment. So this is, there's some servers, firewalls, um, desktops and monitors that are listed on the actual agenda item. As exhibit A, B and C. And the request is to surplus that equipment as it's obsolete and we cannot use it any longer.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Is everybody okay with consent on this? Consent, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Walker, right?
I want to be that fast.
Yeah, not gonna happen.
All right, thank you, Mayor. The agenda item I have for tonight's discussion is the Vermont Park Property Master Plan Discussion. Uh, as all of you know, we held a public meeting on December tenth. I'm trying to share this slide of the park. There it is. Okay. If I got that. So can you all see the concept on your screen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we held the, the master plan, uh, meeting on December tenth to get additional public input for this park property. Um, the comments that we received from that conversation we have with the, um, residents is attached to your packet. Uh, there were several questions about the amenities in the park, uh, parking, stormwater. Um, use of the houses, that type of thing. Um. We understand that there's a, a lot of discussion to be had about the park, uh, tonight. Uh, I opened it up to council to give us direction. We would like to move forward to a plan that satisfies, uh, council's desires so that we can adopt it and move forward.
Okay, that was simple. Um, I think Rob and Joe have been working on this as it's in District Two. And so I think they have a slide prepared potentially with just some discussion points, right? And so are you gonna share that for us, Brent? But you're probably gonna need to stay up there to go back and forth.
Um, if I can just start.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
So as Brent's getting that queued up.
Okay.
Um, and you could, can you do a full slide in that? Maybe zoom, because it's a lot of the small print on there. Um, just to queue this up, the background was, uh, to, to seek out additional guidance, uh, feedback uh, for transparency, um, of not just, okay, it just showed up on an agenda. And there's something that maybe was in a different version. So, okay, we've kept the same version. What's out there on the website, what was out there in the public realm? And then we basically, you know, we had another public meeting onsite on a Saturday afternoon. Thank you, Brent and team for laying all that out and doing that work. Uh, it was, I believe, December tenth on Saturday. So the idea was, okay, let's noodle on this. Let's get some more feedback and thoughts. Um, on, on some issues. And so Rob and I kind of have this, this list here with, uh, conversations from the public, from ourselves, talking to staff and so on, that, um, kind of could use this, uh, as kind of a discussion point of some things to, to address here. Um, and in parentheses, the numbers as applicable would correspond to the, uh, the plan items on the map there. So, um, yeah, so we could just kind of use this as a guideline. Because right now we're doing a discussion, right? Cause I've had people say, well, are you gonna vote on every one of these things? I want to line up and down item each line. I said, no, this is a conversation, it's a discussion. So we put this slide up here so that we can say as, as the end is that we get some consensus on these items that we give you enough information to take next steps, Brent. Okay, does that sound reasonable?
Yep. And then. So what I was gonna do is just kind of go through these. My thought is I'll kind of summarize the feedback that, uh, that Joe and I got. Um, as we talked to citizens. And then kind of at, at each item, I'm also gonna share my thoughts and maybe that'll help kind of spur discussion. And Joe chime in if, if, you know, you disagree, I don't get something covered quite right. Um, so I'll just kind of go, start with the first item. Uh, this is actually something that Joe and I put on here. Um, the pedestrian crossing between neighborhoods is, this is an existing, um, mulch path that connects the village mill and, um, heritage at Dunwoody neighborhoods. And my thought is that we ought to just pull this part out of the plan because it's not really part of the parks master plan. It's more of a small-scale transportation plan or transportation project that connects these two neighborhoods. So improvements to that connection to me happen independent of anything else on the park property. This is just to facilitate travel through. So if we decide to put um, you know, some sort of sidewalk there that just makes it easier for people to walk through with their dogs when it's muddy, um, or raining. I, I think it'll just help avoid confusion if we just pull that out, since it's not really part of that.
Um, okay, so before. Right, so I think the smoothest way to do this is to quickly discuss, not quickly necessarily, but quickly if we can discuss each one and let people ask questions rather than coming back. And so just because I have the microphone. So when I met with the neighbors, the issue was um, inappropriate vehicles using, uh, maybe that's not the right word, like golf carts and stuff. And so we had talked about ballot, I don't know what the word is, but the, the big, yeah, the ballard, thank you. Um, and that's what you're talking about here, right?
Issue can be discussed independent of.
Yes, right.
What might be the best way to make it, uh, uh, you know, a good crossing.
And, and what my goal for tonight is, is to get some consensus. We're not all going to necessarily agree. But to give Brent guidance so that, um, he knows the direction he should head.
And, and just to clarify, Joe mentioned this, we're not voting on a plan tonight.
No, right, but we, we provide, we consistently provide feedback so that there's some consensus. All right, so questions on this thing? Anybody? Catherine?
I just want to clarify, this is the yellow dotted line on the path.
Number eighteen, it's.
Plan right now.
Yeah, there's an existing, um, dirt path there right now between the two neighborhoods.
And basically, we're talking about putting in a sidewalk and then a metal post on either side, so you couldn't have a vehicle drive through there. At the end of the day, which is independent of the Vermont Park Plan.
I, I guess I don't understand how it's independent, like it's, the path is in, in the park.
It crosses city property, but whether or not the park ever, anything ever happens with the park. This project, th- this connection is already there and we're improving upon it. It's a transportation project, not a park project.
I'm about on the same page as Stacy. This is, this, I think this, I think eighteen and seventeen go together. I think this is an entrance into the park, uh, to the neighborhoods. Um. I think, I think the opportunity exists and we'll talk, I don't want to.
Maybe we did them in the wrong order. So maybe we talk about seventeen first.
Why don't I, I'll bring that up and perhaps we'll just talk.
Right.
Well, I, I heard that he wanted to remove this from the park plan, that this is a transportation link that's already there. That may need to be improved at some point in the future, but this is not part of the park plan. This is something that's already existing separate decision down the road someday, but that we don't.
Or, or likely very near future. I mean, I, I see this could be done in, in a year.
Yeah, I'm, no disagreement. But again, to me, it seems like it's already there. It's separate, it's not a decision for us to make because it's already done.
So the so I think that eighteen should have been first. But maybe I'm wrong, just.
Eighteen is, yeah.
Seventeen, sorry.
I'll, I'll go ahead and share that and then maybe we'll just talk about the three of them together.
I could, so, so my, so I'm just gonna throw this out there, it's not even on the plan yet, but uh, the concern is cars driving through there. I mean, it hasn't happened yet, uh, but I think there's an opportunity here. Um, the village mill kind of dead ends into this, that's city right of way. We could take twenty, thirty feet of that, mirror what's on the heritage side and make a nice little for lack of a term, it's not really a pocket park, cause it'd just be an extension of the park where, where we could curb it and put a fence there and it would clearly be the end of a road, it would, cars wouldn't be driving through that. And you could offset the trail connection to there and eliminate that problem. I mean, it's a very small addition to what's there. Like I said, it would mirror what's on the heritage side, where you just have a big green area, uh, that would be clear that it's not a drive-through.
I think the challenge is, is that we did these in the wrong order. Because I think that we haven't agreed that there's going to be a trail.
All right, so let's, let's switch those, then I'll, I'll talk number seventeen.
I think if that's where, I mean, I think.
I just wanted to say, if we didn't acquire this land, we were hoping to allow to, if, if we didn't have this land at all.
Right.
And we had to go to the private owner and ask for an easement, because we'd like to put a five-foot wide sidewalk in between these two properties and put bollards in there. That's, I just wanted to have that separate conversation to say, is that something we should do? And it's not related to whether we have the park or not. And I just wanted to separate them. So anyway, I'm one of seven.
Okay.
I, I'm just still confused because it's, it's an entrance to the park. So how are we not talking?
Because I think that.
In the park plan.
It's, it's a connection between two neighborhoods.
No, I.
Crosses.
Okay, I think that we need to talk about
Seventeen.
Seventeen first.
Well, let me, let me switch to seventeen then. All right, so, um, seventeen is a, a, a public access trail that would connect the heritage at Dunwoody and village mill neighborhoods up to the park property. Um, this is the issue that we received the most input on. Um, it was broken kind of between those opposed, those in favor and a, a group that liked the idea but worried about the adjacent neighbors. Um, however, essentially, all of the closest and most immediate adjacent neighbors have raised a variety of concerns. They're concerned about privacy, security, about the, the process for how this plan was developed. And they're all opposed. My opinion is that this access trail should be removed from this master plan. In the future, once this park is built, once it's operating, if these neighbors decide that they would like to consider that, we can talk to them at that time. Um, if not, I think we pull it out for now. There are too many concerns. Um, and it's not really critical to the operation of the park and the development of the park itself.
Okay, so one, go ahead, John.
But the councilman's second or also was part of that program, so.
You know, it's, it's torn because obviously I want to have a walkable community and connection. I look at Austin Elementary School, they had a walking path over there for decades. I look at the nature center, they have a walking path to their neighborhood. And if it's already there and you move in, then you just accept it. But I'm also a realist. And we have other aspirational things we want to accomplish in this year and, and strategic initiatives. So I'm gonna say we'll, it would be removed from a phase one if we build out right now. Um, but I wouldn't preclude the conversation in the future. So if there's a future phase that the residents say yes, but I would not prevent, I would not do any measures to, uh, not be able to put in that walking path in the future. Let me put it that way.
John, two more.
Yo, I have thoughts, um.
Just on this one item for now, just, I'm just writing.
I'll keep it there.
Right.
Um, there's a lot of discussion with the neighbors that I've had and talking about all the other city park development that we've done in the history of the city. We have bent over backwards for neighbors of our parks to include buffering. I can't think of any park that directly had bought private, single-family homes that are not buffered by a good fifty feet when it comes to um, privacy of the single-family homes. Uh, we've moved dog parks, we put the trail, uh, far, far away from residences when we could have moved that trail closer to residences when we put in Brook Run Park. Um. I think the neighbors bought that property and did not imagine that somebody would put a trail, I guess that path is, or that spite strip is, what is it, twenty feet wide? I'm not sure. Fifty? Okay, so if there's a trail back there. You know, those look directly into the, uh, backyards and houses and I have concerns. If I had my way, I would recommend that we have a buffer around the edge, a forty-foot buffer around all aspects of the park. How do you do that when that park? How do you do that when that park, when that trail is then, you know, when that spite strip is fifty feet wide? I don't really think it's appropriate to have that path there. I would prefer we've seen something, questions about fences. I'd like to see a fence around the park. You know, with, you know, some buffering aspects of it. But that's just me. That's my recommendation. So I'm, I am against the trail going to the neighborhood, going, you know, through that spite strip. Directly adjacent to the single family homes. Um, but that being said, on eighteen, I'm fine with the connection between because it's already there.
Right. Okay, Catherine, do you have anything to add? Okay. Uh. So my perspective is similar to John's that we got, we spent a lot of time um at Brook Run. Putting in a buffer, making sure the buffer was there, moving a dog park because of a buffer. Um. Working a lot with the neighbors. We continue to work a lot with the neighbors. And um to me, this is not. There's a challenge because we have had these standards at other parks. Uh, and the trail's not there. And I'm one of them. Um, and so we need to give, I think it's really important that everyone say what they think tonight so that we can move on with this aspect of. The park um or. Yeah, we just need to get this done, people.
Okay, um. I, I, I have strong opinions on this. Um, and uh, first of all. I want to stress that. We need to listen to everyone's opinion on this. Everybody, we just took a civility pledge that everyone's opinion has value. Um. And that includes the people that aren't perhaps quite as vocal as others. Um. When I looked at the notes from the open house. I counted. The respondents that said they wanted the trail connection to the neighborhood versus that didn't. And by my count, it was seventy percent in favor of the trail connection to the neighborhood. Um. I want to be very clear that I'm sensitive to the, to the four homes. That would border this trail. Um. And which I think, what I think is our response, th- there's a lot of decisions that we make that aren't easy. Um. You're going to make one group happy and one group upset. And, and what you need to do is listen to the core concerns. Of everyone involved and, and enlist, in, in, in the way I handle it personally is I try to see. Are there ways to mitigate the concerns? Um. So that they're no longer concerned. Um, now I don't. Think. That uh the four homes there, that there's anything that we're going to say or do that's going to. To make them want this. Um, but uh, I respect. What John said about what we've done is putting buffers, but. With all due respect, there's a big difference between a dog park and a trail. Um, you know, by setting that same standard with a trail. How is that any different than a sidewalk? That would go through someone's front yard. It's, it's, it's pedestrians walking through. I fear. That if we do not. Build something, the neighbors have already made a connection between the neighborhoods, that they're just going to make their own trail through there. And that the situation will be worse than if we put in a controlled access point and say, this is where you walk. We could put a ten foot trail with twenty feet of evergreen screening on either side and no one would ever see that. Into someone's backyard. No one would ever see the trail. Um, I, I think that is a, a very valid and real solution to this issue. Um. I've heard the concerns. About safety and. Um. You know, uh, but. The reality is those, those concerns are unfounded. Um, there's. Countless research out there in data that's been compiled by various organizations, including the National Park Service. That state that. Trails not only aren't dangerous or safer than. Uh, areas, the properties adjacent to trails are safer than those that are not. So um, I actually spoke a few months back with, with Chief Grogan. To see if there was any history now. I'll acknowledge that we don't have an extensive trail network yet in the city of Dunwoody, but we do have trails. And I wanted to know, I wanted a report of. Crime on trails in the city of Dunwoody. And that report was zero. There's not been a single crime on a trail in the city of Dunwoody. So. Uh, the, the, I understand people's apprehension and fear. But, but it's not reality. It, it, the, the, the truth points and the facts point to trails being safer uh than. Uh, and that's, that's what the data says. Um. What we have here is with, within a quarter mile. Of walking at your front door, down your driveway into a street, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-four houses. Could walk to that, access the park right there on, on foot. That's a less than five minute walk. For a hundred and thirty-four homes. In our, in our, in our parks master plan on our priority list. One of the bullet points in our priority, priority list is continue to develop pathways, sidewalks, side. Bike ways and expand to connect neighborhoods and parks. This is a stated goal. Connecting our neighborhoods to our parks is an important thing. Now, I want to again emphasize, I'm not ignoring the concerns of those four homes that. That um. Would border this pathway. But I, I sincerely believe that not only can we mitigate their concerns with proper planning and screening. We can make it better than it'll be if we do nothing. Because one thing we do know, people are going to find a way in and do it on their own anyway. And if we could put evergreen screening in there and define truly where they go in and go out, I, I believe they'll be better off. Than, than if we do nothing. Um, and, and just one last point. Um. I'm not in favor of removing this from the trail because it. I think that's, that's, that's a disservice to. The people that are opposed to it. Because if the idea is to take it off now and just do it down the road later. I think that's a bit disingenuous on our part and I, I don't, I understand the intent is to get this, this plan approved, but. If, if we plan to put it. On the part, put it there one day. It should be there as someone, you know, commented, it could be a, a phase two or a phase three or just an undefined future. Um, idea to connect, but. Removing it and then, and with the plan of doing it anyway uh is, is not something I would support and. I guess that's all I have to say on that right now.
Yeah. Okay. Um. Tom and I are, are in agreement on this one, and I just kind of want to point out. Um, a couple other. Items around the city. Um, John, you said that you want a forty foot buffer. You know, I walk in W N A Nature Center an awful lot and those trails. Are on the fence lines, actually closer than what we were proposing here. There's a back entrance into the dummy nature center that takes you in through a cul-de-sac. Um, I asked Brett Walker, um, how many complaints he had about the trails and dummy nature center and access. And the answer is zero. Um, it's because the trails are a plan. So if we're doing a park plan, we need to have a plan and how people are going to access the park. So by putting nothing on there, we are giving a free. Invitation to do, well, then do whatever you want. By actually planning access, we are improving the plan. So that. So that there's a people way for it to access it and we can control it. Um. I live in the neighborhood that connects, that has a path going in between two houses. Um, up to the um. Old Austin and where we're going to put a city park. I've had somebody in my office asking when we were going to build the vermac park. Because he wants to buy a house, but he wants to buy a house that connects to the park. But he wants to buy before the park is built because he knows that once the park is built, it's going to, he's not going to be able to afford the house. Because it's going to increase the real estate value. Um. I do have a question and Brent, oh, never, not, never mind. Um. So when, in talking about a plan, we, we have to plan for everything and we know people are going to access the park this way. So why don't we plan for it? Not doing it is. Burying our heads in the sand and saying, oh, well, it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. We know it's going to happen. We have to plan for it. We need to connect these neighborhoods and we need to do in a way to mitigate the concerns of the residents, which are very real and I understand them. But we have to mitigate it and we, by, by, by mitigating the concerns, we plan for them. Plain and simple.
Anyone else, Catherine?
I guess I will uh weigh in. I, we saw a survey of the neighbors that at this point. Seventy-five percent of them don't want this trail at this time and whether we would want it at this time or later is. Is different issue. So. I think they'll use it too. I agree. I think that's what's gonna happen. And I think we might see down the road that this, these neighbors come to us and ask. For that mitigation, but. I think that's the later issue. I don't think anything. The, erasing it now doesn't. Obviate us from. Having a future. Path there. So I think what at present is, is most palatable is. The removal of that. Trail. On this present day. Master plan.
Anybody have, okay, so. This is tough. Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
So again, I, I say it is compromise. I love you guys, right, right? We're all friends about the to be deter, so I'm like, no, no path now. But not to preclude future. We build the park. Neighbors come out, love it. And guess what? We get a goat path in there and we have a security camera. And there's been, again, I was at a public meeting and they're talking about, I don't even want to quote the things that were. That were hollered at Rob and I of what they feared. And it's not, it's, it's not suitable for uh. Restating what they thought would happen. And again, as, as Tom alludes to, it doesn't increase crime. Um, drugs, alcohol, violent crime, rape, someone going to kidnap the children, um assault, everything. I've heard about all these things about that. I go by example, statistics and, and studies. So right now, okay, fine. Just. Dot it line, okay, little asterisk, to be determined in the future, not to preclude. Um, and let, let it naturally happen. If we build the park, if we get the money to build a park. And then see what happens after that.
I, I don't know that I would include to be determined in the future in the plan. I think. That once the park is built, if the neighbors come and say. Either we have this issue or we want this access, that's when we'd revisit it. I don't think we would. Indicate in this plan that that was, I, I think the plan should be what we plan to build. When we build it, not, not including potential future phases.
Anybody else have questions or comments?
I'd just like to make one other comment. Um, so because I think it's relevant to this is Wednesday night, we had a trails meeting. I was out in the lobby and uh a resident spoke to me. Um. And. This particular resident was taught that it lives in a house that borders. Brook Run Park uh and talked about how. They use the trail every day and they love it. And um. I, I mentioned this because this particular resident was also one of the people that fought the city when we were planning to build that trail. And was adamantly opposed to it. And now it's an amenity they use all the time. That is not an isolated case. If you look at the research with trails. Overwhelmingly, a lot of people that were feared or opposed the trails, once they're built, become their biggest proponents. And. I'm not saying that I know better than the residents that live there. I'm not saying I'm smarter than them. I'm not saying that their opinion doesn't matter. None, nothing could be further from the truth. Um, but as I stated, I think. Removing it. If we remove it, it's gone. I, I, I think it's disingenuous to have something on a plan, remove it and then add it back later. I think. I, that's a, I, I don't know how to say this without sounding disrespectful, so it's, it's not intended this way, but uh, to me, it's a cop out. It's. Um, it's, it's giving false hope to those residents. Um. If we don't want to do it now, that, that's fine, but maybe it stays on as a future um. Amenity that we add. Um, and, and I'll just restate that. What I've already stated that. If we don't build it, the residents are gonna. Make their own cow trail through there anyway and um it'll probably be far worse of a situation and perhaps create more headaches for the parks department in the city. Than if we have a controlled access point there.
So I'm trying to think of wisdom. So. Having lived through as a councilperson with the Brook Run Trail. And the Dunwoody Village Parkway. And the failed vermac-womanic traffic circle, which is fine. Um, the difference is, first of all. While we went ahead and put the trail behind Lake Ridge, they don't love it. They don't, they have no, they didn't want connectivity, so they have no connectivity to it. And everyone else that was angry at us for doing it, who use it, and there are a lot of them who use the trail. They don't live, nobody lives adjoining our Brook Run Trail. It's, or even our Parnishal pa- trail. And the Georgetown neighborhood was built around the trail. Oh, not, not Georgetown, Dunwoody Green, Dunwoody Green in Georgetown was built around the trail. Um. And so. This is more complicated um because the, not only is the depth. Or the width or however you want to measure it of the spite strip, you know, not a hundred feet, not. Sixty feet, it's fifty feet, I guess. But um. The hu, the difference between this and a sidewalk is, in some ways, I'm just clarifying, is, is that a sidewalk is usually not. Peering into someone's. Home particularly, or looking down on. And I'm a big proponent of sidewalks. Um, and I'm a big proponent of trails. Just don't always love complications. Um. And so I think that I'm not a proponent of saying that a trail will be there if. First of all, we're not, we don't know when we're building this park and where it falls on our park priority list. We don't even know what's going to be included in the park. Because we're only on the second item. Um, and so. Um, but I think that um. So I think that if we, the decision before us, in my opinion, isn't that we have a plan that has a trail on it. It's a decision, which I think you're saying, is a decision if we build a park with or without the trail. Is that, I mean, I think that's what you're recommending, Tom, right? You're saying. The decision point is we either have a plan that has a trail on it or we have a plan that doesn't have a trail on it. And so I think that's what, I think that. Uh, that that is a way we can give guidance to Brett tonight. Um. About that, I think. So. My sense is, is that. Uh, the, the, there's not really a pure consensus. But if I count in my head, the plan we need to see needs to not have the trail on it. Um. I don't, I don't know any other way to do it if we want to get a plan. Or we can shelve it and revisit it when we have the funds. That's the other option for vermac. Park is to. You know, wait to pay, figure out how we're paying for it.
I would like to hear from um. My constituents up here. My question was very real. Part of the plan is to mitigate the citizens' concerns and, and, and have, give. Access that you, you say everybody's gonna do it, they're gonna do a cow trail. Like, so. How do you mitigate the dangers of that? Like what is, what do you, we, we can't block off the city park. So the plan is just to do nothing and hope for the best? Like, so, I, I mean, because, because, and, and, and I get, I, I, and I go back to dummy nature center. Where that has trails all over the place and different access points through different neighborhoods. And it is a single family residential homes. So.
Therefore, I want to be careful that so much of the na, the nature center. Was an amenity that was there for a, a lot of the people when they purchased their homes. It's, it's not apples to apples. I'm not, I'm.
But it is because you do have a trail that close and we're not talking about a sidewalk. We are talking about a trail. We're talking about access.
You're talking about access, but you're talking about expectations of.
But no, but my question is how.
Right, that's a separate question.
It's a separate question. It's, okay, so then what do you do? So that it doesn't become a, a disaster of people accessing it that way? Like, what, what is, what is your plan?
So if, if I may jump in here. I think it's very difficult to imagine how something will be until it's built. So we all have these, everybody has their idea of what the park will look like and how people will get to it. You may just get a few middle schoolers cutting through. Right there, right? You, you, you know, I don't know that you'll get whole families or people. You, you know, I don't know that you'll get whole families or people just, you know, willy-nilly walking through their neighbors, the, the strip through their neighbor's backyard. So until it's built, we won't know how the park is being used, and we won't know how people are accessing it. Once it's built, if we see that there is an issue, either from our staff seeing it, or the citizens, you know, raising it to us, that to me is when we address it. Right now, we're just using our imagination to conjure up scenarios and solutions.
Well, and Rob, and bullet point four, that screening buffering security, that's, that's something we can address around the entire perimeter of that, from a screening perspective, security cameras, and so on. But without a trail, would you be putting, putting security cameras in a fifty-foot wide strip of woods? I mean, I'm, I'm just, I'm not criticizing, I'm just asking.
Are you talking about security cameras on a wooded trail, or are you talking about just in the park at this point?
That issue is in general for the whole.
Right, that's what I thought, based on the emails I'm getting.
Again, this, this gets to the issue of once the park is built and we see how it's being used, hey, can we put a camera up? I think we're seeing a lot of X. And then maybe that, to me, you know, you troubleshoot, you adjust once it's built for that kind of thing. Um, anyway.
That's too granular for a master plan.
And same question keeps coming up, though.
Are we ready to move to the next issue, or do we want to?
Think we have to move to the next issue, because
All right, so the next, this doesn't relate to a particular item on the plan. It just relates to um various comments that we received about the need to screen or buffer or, or
The parking lot.
Oh, did I miss?
Did we, did we already finish the first one then, because we revisited?
Yeah, we were gonna revisit number eighteen.
What is, what are we doing with that one now? Because this is the north-south connection.
We should move it to the transportation plan, because that's how we treat the Austin school thing was.
Sidewalk, Michael Smith.
It's fine.
All right, so uh, sticking with the correct order then, um, parking lot size and usage. So this is items ten and eleven on the um, October um, two thousand twenty-two iteration of the, the draft. Um, a lot of various input about whether the lot was too big or too small. Some people said too big, some people said too small. Um, the people who thought it was too small are mostly worried about parking um, on adjacent streets. There was also some concerns raised with overflow from the high school, from the Bannister Farm, um, from the adjacent Vermax from tennis club, that might limit the ability of parkgoers to use the lot. Um, my personal opinion is that we hired um consultants to right-size the parking for the amenities that are there, and that we really shouldn't adjust the parking too much with the, the note that we may need to tweak it a little bit, depending on the number of handicap spaces that we'll need for the um playground.
And we can sign it for the rest of it, right? Like, you know, you have to only park there if you're using the park.
And I'll, and I'll give a little bit of background on the parking summary, uh, and it was in the slide that was presented back in October. But I understand if we don't remember that far back. Um, the total park count, based on the amenities that are there, is ninety-five. And then we did a thirty percent reduction for people walking to the facility. So the, the total count of sixty-seven is actually a reduced number from what you would have based on the amenities that are on the site. Um, and including that is some overflow parking. There are sixteen site, or sixteen spots included for overflow for adjacent facilities. Dawson Bannister, things like that. So um, there is a, a reduced parking count in the plan, certainly. If amenities change, or if council wants to reduce that further, we can. But there was a scientific uh, count based on amenities for the parking.
What happened to the covered parking? Is it gone?
Uh, we'll get to that with the solar discussion later on.
Okay.
It's still in the draft.
Right, but, okay, right, I said that incorrectly. Okay. All right, so until we know the amenities and what that looks like, it's a little hard to opine on the parking. I guess once we have the amenities, you can take it back to the consultants and get a parking estimate, I think. Is that okay with everybody?
And just, I mean, there's two, parking lot ten and parking lot eleven on there. Um, my, my, my initial thought, because I did see a lot of comments about too much parking, is that we don't have to build it all at once, right? We could build a certain amount of parking, and if we determine that we screwed up and need more, we could always add it. It's, we're not gonna go and tear up a parking lot if there's a lot of empty spaces. It's, we've just poured a lot of asphalt that perhaps we don't need, but we could perhaps do half the parking, like do parking lot ten, but grade the park so that if we determine that extra parking is needed, it would be an easy add later on. Um, and, but I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll need the parking if the neighbors can't walk to the park, so.
I would just advise at that time, talking about phasing the project, you would want to model, you would want to build the stormwater infrastructure for the entire impervious space that might be in the park. You wouldn't want to undersize that stormwater facility and then have to add it later, so.
Can we talk about the stormwater, since it's sort of related to parking? What's, what's the issue there with the photos that we're seeing? We're not there yet, okay.
Sorry. So for parking, the guidance I think we're giving is at least let us get the amenities picked. And then address, and then maybe look at it with the consultants, and then come back to us.
If there's a change of amenities.
Right, right, exactly, right. I shouldn't say that asterisk, if there's a change. Right. All right, so next is the screening buffering security.
Yeah, so this is just a, a general comment. Um, a lot of folks provided kind of general input um, that the plan needs to include, um, for example, measures to keep uh balls from rolling out into the street um, to include screening or fencing or buffering um, in various locations. Um, you know, especially there's a, a property owner to the immediate north, there's a very thin buffer, for example, um, between their, their property. Um, to me, without the final design, it's really tough to know exactly what to do. So I would prefer there just be a note included in this plan, that screening and buffering and fencing will be included where needed in the final designs.
And my presumption is, to Catherine's point a minute ago about what belongs in the master plan, we always fence. Right?
The, the property is pretty much entirely fenced, except for along Vermac, because of the private fencing.
Right.
Property owners around it. There's really, I can't think of an area that doesn't have a fence.
Right, but we will.
In different stages of repair.
Right, so we'll make sure, though, that, I mean, we put up a lot of fencing at Brook Run
Yeah.
through the years. I mean, we'll make sure that the fencing is more than adequate, I presume, because I think we always do.
Absolutely. And, and something we can show in the master plan that really isn't called out as well as it should be is that fencing and vegetated buffer along Vermac. I think the biggest concern I heard was more about children in the field in that area getting out into Vermac, which, again, is one of those things that was granular um, to show the master plan. But we, we can, we can show.
Right.
A- a- and I can see.
Perimeter fencing.
Right. We visited years ago, I don't, John, maybe we went to see Whelan's office. And across the street, on a busy street was a park. I mean, we just did it at the Georgetown Playground. I don't even have to go to something a long time ago. We have it fenced. It's very attractive. Okay.
And if I can just revisit maybe the idea of buffering, you know, for example, we, we lay out the nature trail and realize, hey, we can see right through that guy's back window. Maybe we should plant a half a dozen something here to screen that. So that, to me, is the kind of stuff where we need, put a note so folks know we're aware of it.
Right.
And then as we do the final design, you know, we'll make sure we
We'll call out a heavy vegetative buffer.
Yeah, something.
Whether it's already there, or if it's something we need to augment.
One other note just is, maybe we could also include a note that just kind of touches on um, some of the security measures. Kind of explains how lighting, cameras, you know, line of sight with amenities and landscape is done, just kind of an explanatory chunk of text, just so, I, I guess folks that are looking at the master plan know, hey, you know, security is also factored in, you know, as the final designs are created. And then Joe had something he wanted to add. Yeah.
Just on the intent, it's not how, what happens, but with the screening and buffering. Just to say, if I'm standing in the park somewhere, I, I shouldn't be able to, you know, look across and see in somebody's backyard, right? So that's along the, the areas, right? So however that happens.
Any thoughts on this before I move on?
Hardly with the screening and the buffering around all the perimeter aspect of the park were appropriate.
All right, so this is item number thirteen in the plan, the, the October twenty-two plan. Um, we, we got some mixed comments on this, uh, you know, some folks in favor of, of solar as designed, uh, some opposed. Uh, most of the opposition is based on the cost rather than the inclusion of solar itself. Um, and the need to build separate structures, this is the covered parking for those. There was a really good suggestion um, by more than one person to just put panels on the building um, or the buildings that will use power, um, instead of building separate structures. I think that's a great idea. I think we could put solar panels on the house we're gonna keep and on the restroom. Uh, that will provide power during the day when those buildings are used the most. It would probably drop the cost of that amenity by an order of magnitude. I can't imagine that it would cost more than fifty thousand, even if you had to redo the roof on the house, uh, to put those in. Um, so that's my suggestion, is keep the solar, but let's adjust how it's done so that it's much more cost-effective.
It's possibly the only item whose cost will get cheaper as we delay.
So start making the panels here.
And just going on with, with Rob said, it's about the intent. It's to show that we are striving for carbon neutral, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, uh, blurring fossil fuels, et cetera, leading by example. And definitely there's an ROI. You put it in today, guess what? We own this forever. We're not gonna be flipping and selling. We're gonna be here forever. So yeah, the ROI will be there.
Will that building be there forever? What's the, what's the return on that building? What's the stability of that building?
Um, well, the, the bathroom and the pavilion obviously will be built new.
Brand new, okay, that, that.
But the, the house, it's not in bad shape. I mean, with constant repair and upkeep, it could last decades. I mean, it could be quite a long time that the house could be there.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, that's prime real estate park property. We have park amenities that are looking to find space. We saw emails regarding the, the uh, handweavers and other people that look for space. Um, having an administrative, you know, caretaker or the administrative offices for the park in that park is one use, but again, is that the best use? I understand short term, while we're filling the gap and having that house available and using the water running through it, makes a lot of sense. Long term, I'm not sure if that is the best location for. John, we have that as a later discussion item.
Was that a later one?
The use of the house.
Oh, please, then, let me stop what I'm saying.
You can say it. Just, just hold that thought for a few more items.
So I'm okay with sa- solar. I'm not okay with what it costs um, in the proposal. And I think building a building structured part, not structured parking, we certainly couldn't afford that and want it there. But covered parking seems kind of a little over the top, so. All right, Rob, or Joe, whoever's running.
Is, is the consensus to keep solar, but put it on the buildings?
Keep exploring it. This is one of those other decisions. I think I have, regardless of what we keep the original house for, I want to keep the original house, even if it's the bathrooms. And so it's fine to put it on top of there.
Um, next issue is uh, the, the large open field, um, with the type of field. And then I listed stormwater runoff with the field, just because the field gets the pond, as we have the, the picture of here. And uh, as was the case on the day of the open house, uh, I wore rubber boots so I could go get the pins um, out at the end of the day. Um, so, you know, big concerns about ponding and drainage adjacent properties. Um, some questions about the type of field that will be installed, turf or natural, I believe it's a natural field right now.
Showing its grass and.
Um, some questions about the field being the correct size, should it be smaller? So there's more room for the playground or the playground shift. So those are the kinds of questions we got about the field. Uh, my thought is that um, you know, we just make it clear that we are, it is gonna be a natural field, so folks know that. And then we need to include an explanation about how construction and post-construction stormwater are addressed. And then I think it would be of some use to just not commit to, but, but maybe suggest some different stormwater control measures that could be considered for the site. Um, I know you had mentioned some underground infiltration, which would be, I think, a really clever use of of space, you know, to save space, you could put something underneath the field to collect and infiltrate the water. Um, you know, Joe mentioned bioswells, and we were talking about this earlier. So I, I, I think to, to let the residents know that under Georgia law, stormwater has to be the same or better than it is now, as it leaves the site. Um, and then maybe just some ideas or concepts or thoughts on how that might be handled would be, would be of use.
Feedback on this one specifically, people, anybody? So I I'm not su- I mean, I understand this might impact the amenities, but if we could do a water feature, like obviously not one people play in, but bioswells or something, if there's a pond or something, could we staff it with fish? No, I guess not stock of fish, sorry, goldfish. But um, the, just, but, but one of my questions, and maybe it comes later, is of the four, you know, the estimate it costs, what is converting septic to sewer, and what is stormwater management? You don't have to answer yet, we'll get to that at the end. But I think that clearly there's a big problem on this property, or it's low-lying or whatever, and we have to fix it. I mean, that's just a given under Georgia law. So um, what else did you need feedback on?
Go ahead. Brent, could you speak to the stormwater runoff and how, when we, we, because when we build a field, like I don't know, how, how it improves and what, what do we need to do?
Sure. So um, we have, we do a hydrology study whenever we do construction documents for a new park. Um, and Georgia law requires us to do a pre and post condition of what's existing now and what it will be after we build it. And we can have no increase on adjacent properties from our stormwater. So then we create the engineer solution for how we're gonna do that, whether it be bioswells, underground detention. There's water quality that we also have to, to perform along with retaining the water, detaining it on our property. So a lot of smarter people than me uh, come up with those solutions. And there are cost factors, you know, bioswells and things like that are obviously cheaper than underground detention, but you don't always have the real estate to put those things in or size them to the size they need to be. A good example of bioswells is Purnishaw Park. You know, we did not put any detention ponds in that facility, but we do have the large collection areas that are vegetated. Uh, and that provides water quality and some retention through the pipe size as it flows down to the creek. That's one option. When we did the soccer fields in the back of Brook Run, we built a large underground vault that uh, retains all the water from the artificial turf. And then it percolates out of that facility and provides some water quality as it leaches into the ground. So there's a lot of different options uh, that, and Rob mentioned, uh, what we have to do. So I don't know if spelling all that out at a master plan level is necessary. I think it is a good idea to address it as a note, to say that all you know, opportunities will take them to address stormwater. But at the end of the day, we are required by state law to do it. We can't create a rise in, in water on other people's property. There are some issues out there, obviously, because of the grain of the land and where the water settles and then runs off of it. Uh, I would venture to say that after the park is built, those conditions will be improved just by the grading and the uh, stormwater control measures we put on the site.
Uh, John.
Lynn, you mentioned it, but what's the status of the septic? It's not on the list, by the way. Um, where, where's the field? Where is it now in relation to this pond that I'm seeing? I mean, this, this pond is gonna drain.
Yeah, so the septic goes behind the house.
Behind the house, okay.
It's not in the field in the front.
Got it. All right, I'm just trying to make sure that the water, where's the water going and how is it impacting everything else we want to do?
So there's, there's a swell that drains it to the property. You're standing at the porch, because I can't get my berries. You're standing on the porch to the right.
Okay.
There's a pond over there. There's actually a pond on that property. There's also uh, some granite ditches and a concrete flume that's on a piece of property behind uh, the White House. So it all kind of channels that way and goes route of our property into stormwater structures and then into that concrete flume. Um, all of that would have to be studied. And we have to take measurements of where the water drains off the property and ensure that it doesn't rise in post-conditioned uh, construction.
Alright, so as far as the decision on septic sewer, what was the update? What's the latest?
We don't have a choice.
We will go to sewer.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next.
Alright, so the next one is is my catchall for what I consider significant redesigns. People that wanted more or fewer amenities and then requests to keep the second house. So the second house is a nineteen seventies brick ranch house that's on there that would be removed. In this, some folks wanted that used for other public purposes. Some folks wanted the design change to include more amenities, tennis courts, things like that, that would require some removal of trees. There were, I also got some comments where folks wanted it kind of as a more natural setting, which is some trails and not much there at all. My personal opinion, we're saving the older house, the nineteen forties era house. We want to preserve all the existing mature trees. I personally think we shouldn't significantly change the site layout or the amenities proposed in the plan. One citizen expressed interest in building a pump track, which technically there is space. Bicycle bicycle playground. So we talked to Brett about this. This is not the right amendment for this location. There is a potential spot for it at Brook Run around the outside of the skate park. So that's a decision later down the road, but to me it doesn't get put in this plan. So my opinion or my thought for just significant redesign is we don't do that. We've got, I think, a nice balance of natural and active uses here right now.
Just just the other one is the the three pickleball courts versus four. I mean, does a does a fourth court having four help balance out if you you want to have, I don't want to say the word tournament or anything, but right now it's just three. If we do four courts, does that make it more, you know, it's an even number and more and more people moving around and doing things? If you have organized pickleball activities, I don't know how pickleball operates. So, you know, the number three versus, I don't know.
Tomato tomato. We want four, we'll move the, we'll have to shift park and add some additional parking count.
Three's fine.
I don't believe we allow outdoor tournament play in any of our parks, correct?
We don't.
Okay, so that 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 would be a consideration. If there was tournament play, you'd need a minimum of two courts. But since that's not the case, then it's irrelevant.
Well, I mean, it is super, super hot. And I mean, I mean, when I say hot, it's a super popular activity, you know, I think it's just going to go more and more to get a, do we squeeze in a fourth one or is that going to just really?
I don't think we want to invite tournaments to Vermont Road.
Well, we're going to have a lot of people that just want to play potentially.
Right, so we only, we tennis is was until pickleball really popular. Not sure it's as popular as it. It still is. Well, because the piece I saw on TV the other day was interesting. But we have twos, two Z tennis courts in two different places in the city, and that was all, so I think we can do three pickleball courts.
How many pickleball courts do we have for Roberts?
I guess four.
Yeah, four, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, so seven. And plus our, we were talking, the Windward Hollow Court strike for pickleball now? Okay, so we have four courts, Waterford is two, so yeah.
What I want to keep in mind with this amenities list that Brent has put together, it's comprehensive to the park plan.
Yes.
It's not, nothing is in isolation. Right, so these are well, well thought out designs, right?
I just had a question because I'm big on the sensory playground. If there is, as we go through that process, an option or if there is a need also that fits in with that, that fits in the plan, whether it's raised beds for a small community garden where people in wheelchairs can access, you know, with with partnership from Dumbwoody Garden Club or something, yeah, so. Right, so I mean, just small improvements that make it feel even more inclusive.
We could, we could easily change in the key, the sensory playground and add and garden. And add that amenity throughout the park, so sensory garden throughout, because that could be on the trail in the woods also. It doesn't just have to be in the playground proper. It could be various places.
Okay, anybody else happy bet for Rob? Continue on.
Alright, so the next is kind of a catchall for what I call minor redesigns. And this was recommendations to include nice trees and landscaping along the Vermac frontage to extend the nature trails down to the sidewalk so that you don't have to walk through the parking lot to get to the trails. To build the sidewalk at Vermac Road wider so that if there is a path, a multi-use trail that goes there in the future, you're already built for it. And then to consider some additional landscape features, you know, Joe mentioned alongside the house, some kind of sensory garden or serenity garden or something like that. To me, these are all reasonable and expensive additions that would improve the plan. With just the note that you need to make sure your vegetation is deer proof.
Yeah, I have a meeting with DNR about deer in a few weeks. Go ahead.
So I was just asking what vegetation is.
Right, right, if nothing.
I don't know, but I know they love host.
They love everything, which is a problem.
And and by the way, just from the bullet, Rob just hit the lot, the last one too. So it's the number three nature. I just wanted to make sure that was called up nature path connecting up to Womack. And then the second to the last, the streetscape white sidewalk, just taking that whole into account.
Um, yes, that's all fine, I think. Does anybody object to trees? Seeing none? Okay, just include trees.
Alright, next, next item here is the use of the existing house that's going to be kept. It's currently used by park maintenance staff. And they store equipment there. There have been some requests to use that house for other purposes. To me, we're saving the house, we're saving the garage, we're saving the parking pad. If we want to change how we use it five years from now, we easily can do that. Right now, the presence of the park staff is making, you know, kind of keeps that park, keeps it on that park. And to me, let's just keep the park use of that for now down the road. We can revisit.
Think so. I don't think so. I mean, we need the caregivers, caretakers there now because it's vulnerable and open. I mean, I guess we, I guess I'm presuming maybe this park gets built within five years, but probably I'm wrong. So I think that that's a real discussion that needs to happen. Does it need to happen today if we're committed to keeping the house? Maybe not. I don't know what anybody thinks. But I think that heavy, I think that this is a small piece of property. And how we use every bit of the space is important. And so we can talk, you know, I think that we have Brook Run. Go ahead, John. And we have a need for space.
Well, I'm in agreement with, I think, where Lynn's going. I'm not sure we need park administrative space here in a public park. We have office space here at City Hall. We have office space over at the annex. I just, long term, I know there's also thoughts of someday redoing the maintenance facility at Brook Run Park. That is behind the scenes, that's a non-public. You're not going to having the public come up to that location. You could easily have a couple offices behind the scenes at that maintenance facility if that ever gets done. But having it a public park building where there's going to be administrative staff just doesn't make sense to me, not at that location. It's just what, not when we have the needs of others in the community that want to use it for other public reasons. I guess to me it's.
I I guess to me, since it doesn't really require any change to the to the lot at this time, we're going to keep the house, we're going to keep the garage and keep the pad. Once the park's built, that's to me when we revisit how we're going to use that house.
That's fine.
Again, I'm not disagreeing with that. I was trying to say long term.
Right, and but long term, we need to improve the facility at Brook Run so that and we did have office space burned down, that could have been office space burned down. But potentially, that's, yeah.
And that, and the the reason why our operations staff is at the house is because we ran out of cubicles when we hired our additional staff.
So I know that Jay is working on some of that internally and so.
The long-term desire to councilman Henning's point is to build the new maintenance facility at Brook Run and then house our park operations staff at that location. So certainly, the house now at Vermac property is a stopgap to get up, because it it honestly makes more sense for our operations staff to be out in the parks. Having them come all the way over to Ashford Dumbwoody to do paperwork, print things out and then go back out to the rest of the city to be in the parks eats up a lot of their day. So if they have somewhere that's more centrally located in one of the park facilities, it's easier to get in and out of. It it does help with the operations staff. So hopefully, we can build the new maintenance facility. It will be designed with park operations staff offices there, and that will free up the opportunity to potentially do something with the house. And there's always opportunity to add home to this house, just like we did the the barn at the Dawson Mansion property where we saved the older portion, removed the newer portion, and then rebuilt a new facility attached to it to mimic what was there. So there's a lot of potentials we ought to get into that discussion.
I'd like to see it with public access with rocking chairs on the front porch, rocking chairs on the back porch. Preserve, I mean, I know it's a small building. We don't have to decide what we're going to use for today. I think the question today is, do we save it? I think we've said we're going to save it. If anybody objects, go ahead, Joe.
So I also am following up with what you said, Brent. It it's concurrent. So when when I see this coming to fruition and being built out, it's with the same cash flows when we go to the citizens, ask if they want skin in the game to float a bond referendum, leveraging all the hard work that Tom did with his capital projects committee. And in that capital projects committee, did you address the parks staff building? So it's identified. So that's great. So you know what? Within a couple of years, we can see this come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Alright, next is actually a repeat, which is just the frontage and streetscape.
Good plan.
Along Vermac, I had wrapped this, roped this in with the minor redesigns. So I think we could just buzz past that. Let's, Joe, you want to add anything on this? Next item isn't really a part of the arts plan per se. It's just some conversations we had while we were looking at the site and talking to citizens. And that's that we're going to need pedestrian crossings and traffic calming for people that are walking to the park and going across the street to the park. Right now, there are no crosswalks. This is on a hill, so we need to think about how we're going to get people that want to try to walk or ride bikes to this park that are on the west side of Vermac safely over to the east side where the park is.
Well, we have big efforts coming with pedestrian safety and.
So I I don't know that this needs to be included with the plan, but we need to acknowledge that it needs to be done concurrent with the plan.
Yes, or before.
Yeah, or before.
Right, okay.
Next item, nature trail path connecting to Vermac Road. This is also a repeat from above that I had roped in with the the minor changes. And I believe that's the last of kind of the main feedback topics that that Joe and I got when we talked to citizens.
So anybody have any questions on these? I'd like to talk about money a little bit, and I don't even know if we need to do it today. But it, you know, just like the seven million for the trail, a multipurpose trail or path until we know it's really more than half of that is a transportation improvement with intersection, intersection improvements, is that what you call it, intersection improvements? What of the estimate, and you don't have to answer today. But moving forward, we need to understand like what's the sewer cost? And what's the stormwater cost? Because out that, and then price the amenities. Does that make sense? Because it's a car, is it in the memo?
Yeah, there's opinion problem caused in the memo.
Okay, sorry.
None of the amenities have changed. It's fairly.
Wait, where is it? Wait, where? No, I know, but I can't. So because it seems like a lot of money to me, which it just does. And so right, probably, and it'll probably be cheaper in two years from now. So the septic estimate is what? I'm looking, I'm looking the septic estimate.
Septic demolition, ten thousand dollars.
No, the sewer connection. I think it was a lot.
It's twenty-six hundred dollars.
That cannot possibly be right.
That may just be for the water line itself.
That entire utilities item is eighty-eight thousand and some change.
Okay, I thought it was a lot more than that. Okay. Alright, thank you. Alright, anybody have other questions? Well, the next step is to incorporate these comments and work with Eric as to an appropriate time to bring it back to us. I'm still trying to figure out. And also, please, I'm not, I have a much larger number in my head of when we talked about putting it, pulling it off of septic and putting it on sewer from earlier when we were talking about using ARP money to do it. And so if we could just please confirm that the utility work isn't subsequent to the actual connection to sewer and also how DeKalb County is going to connect it to sewer. Right, but we chose not to use it. We didn't budget for it because we wouldn't know when we were going to do it.
And just to clarify for this, because there was a comment made in public comments tonight about the park plan and the cost and all of that. We're not approving a plan, we're not even approving a final construction plan. We're, this is a conceptual plan. We're not bound
Right.
by anything in this. Things can be phased, things can be changed, added, deleted as current or future councils see fit depending on where we are financially and otherwise as a city. And I think Catherine brought up a, an excellent point earlier that our park system, each individual park doesn't have to be all things to all people, that it's it's a holistic system. And so the amenity you want may not be in this particular site, but we'll certainly work to get it somewhere else if it isn't there already. So I think, you know, I'm I'm overall happy with this, this plan. I'm, as the mayor mentioned, I share her enthusiasm for the sensory playground. I think that's a much needed amenity for this, for the city that'll be greatly appreciated. And and I, and I hope if we're putting money into this park, that we're putting it into doing a world-class facility for that to satisfy that community. But but again, we're not approving the final construction plans and documents. We're approving a concept. And that can be changed if if it needs to be in the future.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is just right, just gets better and better, right? Alright, so my point, when I said that I generally don't like to be first, is I general, I just wish someone else had already opened one in Georgia just before as Paul loads up his discussion. I I don't. Because my Paul is a thing.
Yeah, on a lighter note.
I hope you have some good graphics to support this. I'm a visual guy.
I did not bring any, I did not bring any samples either. The, so the purpose of this right now is to summarize sort of where we're at sort of in in our research and then provide examples for what other places have done, how this looks in places that have these type of facilities. And then sort of provide as sort of a discussion starter to you all the direction we've been thinking for regulation of these dispensaries. And I would legitimately be would would encourage you all to sort of speak out before we start drafting and and running it through the text amendment process through planning commission and city council to make sure that it's something that's, that sort of fits, fits the city of Dunwoody. First, the the current legal framework, and this has been sort of a bit of a a long process for the state of Georgia to get at this, like the most recent one, and this is changing as as we speak right now, that the legislature is active on this subject matter right now as well. Like the most recent law on the books that we have is two thousand nineteen, that sets up a framework for this called Georgia's Hope Act. And it set the framework for these type of business to operate in Georgia. It essentially opened two pathways to legally dispense medical cannabis. Um it essentially uh opened two pathways uh to legally dispense medical cannabis. One of them has been fleshed out, the other one has not. Sort of what? What exists right now is like the first pathway that I've listed here. It's through the Georgia Access to Medical Cannabis Commission. And those are for standalone dispensaries. So there's there's a whole sort of process about how. This has to be grown and how it has to be processed and how it has to be distributed. None of those things are of particular interest for us, like where we come in sort of on the, on the retail side as as the market for potential dispensaries. Um ultimately, um the commission um has license, issued six licenses for up to. Thirty dispensary statewide. They're currently, they are active. Um appeals to this, so there may end up being more. There was an article in the AJC today. That sort of referenced that there may end up being more than six licenses, but that's all still a work in progress. For right now, um they're committed to thirty dispensaries statewide. There's a second option like through regular pharmacies, and that has not been fleshed out yet. That may happen in the future, but that has not moved forward as of yet. Um state has sort of minimum requirements for distance, um thousand feet from public or private schools. From early care education programs and from places of worship. So that's state law. That we'll just have to carry over. Uh but the state says that we can be more restrictive, that specifically calls out municipalities. For being able to use their zoning powers to regulate based on local needs. So this is sort of overall the the framework that we're operating in. Um, a second point is that um for right now, because we have a use category. Um the use category is called other, other retail businesses. Um should we not do anything? Um, these things would be legal in and and done with you just with those state regulations. So. Um, that's why we ended up doing the moratorium. Um for background, uh Georgia has only legalized what's called low THC oil. And and this is sort of, on the one hand, and only for specific medical purposes. Um, the, it is capped in Georgia. It's it's called low THC oil. THC is like the compound that's active in. In cannabis that 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 is sort of the substance that gives you a high. Um, in recreational cannabis, as things you buy on the street more or less, um the THC content is is typically nineteen percent. Or can be more than nineteen percent. In Georgia, this is kept to five percent, which is low, which is lower than. Most of the states that actually do the medical cannabis. And I have a map sort of on the next slide. That that shows that a little bit. Uh Georgia is also stricter than other medical cannabis programs. In that a doctor's prescription is not sufficient. There's only seventeen specific medical conditions that are listed. And that's not your typical, um you know, it's not like a um a miscellaneous mental health condition. It's seventeen sort of severe. Uh, health issues like end state cancer, for instance, is is one of them. Um, so Georgia has has really strict regulations comparatively. Um. And then sort of, um I I want to be sort of um. The sort of transparent about this too, that the legal dispensaries are not going to have. Sort of, I think in in both dimensions, the legal dispensaries will have a limited impact. Um, number one, because of uh the specific product that is being sold, the. The potential legal market is probably relatively limited. So on the one hand, any externalities that we get will be. Will likely be less than it is in other states. Um. On the other hand, um it will also not likely reduce the illegal market as significantly as in other places. And I have one number here, even in Massachusetts where recreational cannabis is legal. There's a study that showed that the illegal market still comprises sixty eight percent of the overall market. Um, so that the majority still is um on the illegal market uh in in Georgia, based on how restrictive it is. And how limited of a product choice um will be available in Georgia, the number will probably be much higher. In um for for the illegal market. So for for both ways, sort of the impact of these will likely be less. Then then we anticipate at first glance. And. The product that is being sold in Georgia in most other states wouldn't even be considered um. Uh THC oil or wouldn't even be considered cannabis, but would be. Um, would function sort of under the term CBD, you know, which is what you see sort of in in stores even right now that can be sold legally. Because at five percent THC rate, that that is still under the thresholds um in in most other states. So you have, like, I have a map here from from a sort of uh data aggregator. That doesn't even list Georgia sort of under the medical programs because of that limit to five percent. Where they're still categorizing it as a CBD only and not as. Not as sort of a full-fledged medical cannabis program. So this is sort of the frameworks that we're operating under. This is what's, what's before us. And then we looked at um sort of our sister state to the south that has, that has um. Legalized medical marijuana uh in in two thousand fourteen, so they've been doing it for a while. And we had both reached out to a few municipalities there. Um, so their program is generally a bit more sort of open, it's a bit more liberal than what would be allowed in Georgia. But the build form in Georgia is relatively comparable to, to what we have in in Georgia. So we felt it's a, it's a. Pretty good, pretty good comparison. Um, we reached out to a few municipalities to get a sense of how things are going, sort of what the what the impacts are. Um, both kind of what, what type of uh retail locations do these uh places seek out? Uh what's the impacts in terms of parking, in terms of nuisances, uh in terms of loitering, in terms of sort of. Any, any sort of type of items that the zoning administrators in those places um observed. And then we did sort of, I I have a couple of screenshots, like where we did like a couple of sort of virtual drive-bys on. On Google Maps to see how these things look in practice, to give us a sense for what what we can expect. And um what we found is like that typically these places go into sort of either inline retail spaces or freestanding. Retail restaurant buildings, they're on average sort of two thousand to five thousand square feet, so they go into relatively small spaces. And in into a lot of sort of existing shopping centers, you know, they just rent a suite. And and go go in there. A traffic impact was not distinguishable to. Sort of our colleagues in in Florida, so it's relatively similar to um a regular pharmacy or regular retail store. And and interestingly, no one reported sort of any nuisances. And then. Um, on on Google Maps, sort of when we sort of pulled up, and and you can do that yourselves too, if you just like look at some places, you know, you see. At a, at a given point in time, you see what what's happening on the site. It it also did not look. Either overrun or didn't look uh eerie or abandoned or or noticeable amounts of loitering sort of at any time. A few example here, um. This is sort of like a, a small retail building uh on sort of a suburban street in in Pensacola. Probably old office building and they're like truly, which is one of the companies that also uh received a license in Georgia. Sort of took over like the left half of this building here. This is sort of another example, like a bit of a newer building, like a dedicated retail building, but the next to a um a Panera Bread. Same company, um. And then here, there's sort of a inline tenant in in also like a a strip shopping center. Um, where they're next to a subway. So it generally is sort of they. Prefer not like the the type A locations or not, that they don't want go into into your typical mall, like I wouldn't expect them in perimeter mall. But more like the the outdoor shopping centers that we have, those seem to be the most likely locations. And then also not like the big. The big sort of uh anchor spaces, but more like an inline tenant situation. Seems to be um the most, most common setting for these type of places. Then Dorville was the first city um that that tackled this and dated it early, like in. In uh twenty twenty-two that I want to share. Um. Dorville has regulated those as a special use, so like a special land use permit. So they have, if a medical cannabis dispensary wants to come in, they have to come before their planning commission and city council. And have to uh have to be sort of separately approved through that. Uh Dorville has set a. A maximum floor area of ten thousand square feet, so they were concerned about, I guess, la- large flagship stores. Um, and then they've said, uh they've kept the number of licenses that could be in the city of Dorville at the same time. To four by ten thousand residents, and Dorville has about ten thousand residents, so to um to about four locations. Um, and then there's sort of a bit of activity in the surrounding municipalities, because this is starting to become, to become real. Their Roswell has uh adopted a moratorium to to allow them to study this bit more. And then truly, we're just like, there's there's two licenses right now that are sort of more or less ready to go. Um, truly, it has announced locations in Marietta, Macon, and Pula. And to my knowledge, none of these places has dedicated um. Regulations, so they're coming in sort of under the existing sort of retail regulations. And then the second company that is ready to go botanical sciences, uh they had not announced locations yet. Um, and I mean, I have sort of two slides that that's um. Sort of provides sort of our initial thoughts uh around the subject matter and sort of our initial proposal to you all. Um, number one, um that that's overall, uh state of Georgia has decided that medical cannabis is a valuable resource. So that that it is sort of a useful treatment to uh for for these specific conditions and that it's a worthwhile thing to provide to. To residents. Um they've kept it at right now, like only thirties locations statewide. Um, so on on the one hand, it is something if we, if we want to create regulations that. That allow for these things to happen in Georgia, and there are only thirty sort of statewide. Um, then it's likely if we create strict regulations and they will probably just go somewhere else where it's not quite as strict. Um, is sort of the the realistic um expectation for us. We're not expecting a ton of negative impacts to this. Um, and that's both because. Uh the Georgia system is just like different than it is in other places. Um, where it's it's stricter and it's less permissive than this. And then. We just didn't find any sort of negative experiences that uh the Florida municipalities shared with us. And the question sort of between, like, we could do it two ways, pretty much like in in our commercial districts, we could do it as a. Permitted use that just, you know, where they just come in, if they meet the specific requirements. They would just obtain a business license and could be active. It would be purely administrative. Second option is the adorable option to make it a special land use that has to. Love go through uh planning commission and city council to get approved. Um, we're recommending uh making it a permitted use here, um with sort of specific requirements that address sort of our concerns. And that's sort of for two reasons. Um. Uh, number one, they, if they go typically into inline spaces and our typical, uh our typical conditions for. Special end use permits have to do with buffering, they have to do with uh operating hours with specific design standards. And none of these things really match sort of the the most likely locations with this. Um, and then two, it's, we think that these may not actually sort of. In in the implementations may end up being not actually noticeable from an impact standpoint. Um, so we would recommend that uh just drafting. Sort of the regulations that we think are are useful and then just doing it as a permitted use. Um, and then for these sort of specific conditions or for these specific considerations that go with those businesses. The state law, um we'll, we'll have to do in. And we'll incorporate that into any regulations we do. Um I for comparison here, I have what we have on the books for packaged liquor stores. Uh where our distance requirements are typically like three hundred feet, uh two places of worship. And then six hundred feet to schools, so like the uh medical cannabis. Uh with it being a thousand feet is already stricter than what we have sort of for typical package stores. Um. What we would recommend is to have a distance requirement here, so not like durable, just capping it a specific amount. Even though this would sort of accomplish some of the same thing, we would propose sort of an anti clustering. Um, requirement here, there, if we're saying that yes, this is actually something that could be useful for residents. So we want to make it available, so we put some distance requirement in there. So that we don't get these things clustered in perimeter center, which would be the most likely place, but. That there could be one over here and then potentially one on the east side. Um, but put uh put a requirement in like that. And then um to just include language in there that prevents consumption on the premises to get sort of a. That a percent, potential um nuisance problem that could come with this. With it, I want to end the the um presentation part of this and would love to hear what, what the council thinks.
Okay, so if it's okay with everybody, we'll go down a row. We'll start with John. I need one of those things like at tennis matches that tells me where I was last time. Um, and if you have questions, that's fine. If you have comments, that's fine. If you don't. Anything to say, that's fine too, but just share your thoughts, because this is in the initial stages.
Paul, thanks for the presentation. I believe everything we do is going to be based on state law. I've been to numerous places around the United States that show with different types of green. Um, I'm from Illinois and know that there's certain locations that's recreational, but they're also in very, you know. Fortress buildings. There's not many of them, and they're fortress buildings. There's very few windows and they're standalone buildings and. That's where you go. Um, I've been to other states where it's by medical use only. But I can go down the street and get a medical card in about twenty minutes for my backache, and those locations are on every corner. Uh I've been, uh, you know, beer, wine, and weed. I have a s- a sign of that, you know, for, they're on every corner in some states. Um, I like your ideas for the permitted use. I like the uh aspect of the limited amount of licenses. Allowed within the city. I like the geographic uh spread. I like the. The minimal, you know, requirements that you're putting on it based on alcohol and other things. Again, but in reality, we're not going to know what we need to do until state law gets passed. So therefore, keeping the moratorium in place um until that happens would be. Um, my goal so that we can work on that. Um, what, on our ordinances after that passes, and if other municipalities want to allow them now, so be it. We're just uh letting them jump in front of us on this aspect. Thank you.
So just, so you know, it has passed. So so the reason, I mean, just so it's passed a few years ago. And they've had all this legal finagling over, I guess, production? And distribution, mostly production or mostly distribution, both. So, but I think they're. Solving some of that now. I guess they've given out a couple of license. So anyway, go ahead.
Does GMA have any model ordinance? Uh what's happening?
I haven't even heard them mention it, has anybody? I haven't heard it mentioned.
Again, we're inventing the wheel and uh. It's just like, yeah, we're burning a lot of staff hours and 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 opportunity for staff to do other work that's really productive here. I know we gotta kind of get this done, but I'm like, can we leverage, is there a wider network we can network with? You know what I mean?
I think we're ahead of this.
Yeah, and then uh, and just to double check, I I don't, you know, do we ask our lobbyists that that that's. Stabilizing a state law, just to kind of give us some, maybe we ask them for guidance as well, what they've seen throughout the state, potentially, maybe they have another. Uh casting a wider net um about developing it. And do we even bother? It shouldn't be on our, for the city of Dunwoody, the whole state. Do we bother connecting with the industry themselves? And talking to them? And what are their real intentions and what do they do? Uh, again, that's something I would think from GMA level or the state level that we have some kind of network to leverage. All right.
Just a few questions. Um, in regards to the clustering, would that, does that include other jurisdictions? So like if somebody wants it, wants one in the Georgetown area, but then they're right across the border and shambly, like. Does, does those clustering regulations include? Something that in in a different city?
And and typically ours don't, but we can sort of write it up um. Like the moment we write it up, we can put it in there either way. Like it can be a little bit tricky sometimes to find these places because we've access sort of to our business license database, but not necessarily. For for the others, um but but we can sort of, it depends how we define it.
Um and then one thing I would just throw out there um. Thousand feet from schools early and places of worship. Parks, a thousand feet from a park too. I don't know, just. Um. And is there a downside to us making it too strict? So that they wouldn't want to do business here? I mean. We have it on the books, uh so is there a downside to making it too strict? Like, or do we think this is gonna be a big tax? Increase or do we want to make it strict? Okay, that that's, I mean, yeah.
There is more pending legislation about this, so what I think the value of this discussion now. Is that we can decide if there's something that's very important to us to either advocate for or advocate against and get GMA to be doing that. But it's, you know, maybe we don't want to be hamstrung, maybe we want as loose a state legislation as possible so that we can do whatever we want. To do on that, so maybe at this point we should be looking at what's coming down the pipeline to try to get our. Um our opinions included.
Uh so I'm I'm gonna make, I guess, these comments based on the law that exists right now, not what may or may not happen in the future. To me, this is a narrow law written to provide essentially a drug for people with chronic medical conditions or or certain kinds of medical conditions. And do we want our citizens to be able to access that if they have those conditions? And it's legal, I think, yes, so um I think we do want to figure out a way for something like this to be allowed in the city. I like the idea of clustering. Um, you know, I think that works well. I'm I'm less concerned with limiting the number. I think clustering will kind of self limit the number. Um I'm okay with it as a permitted use, that's fine. Um getting at the question of size, you know, what if a uh. A doctor's office decides that they want to have a small dispensary as part of their office, would that be possible and?
I don't think that, I think that's what we don't want in Georgia. I think that's, they're trying to avoid that in Georgia.
Yeah, that's the the two pathways for distribution right now, like and one of them won't be fleshed out for for a few more years, but like. It's only through licensed dispensaries that will be of these six, six companies pretty much that's that's all right now, what's on the books.
Let let me flip that, then let's say that someone has a nice natural food store and they want to open a dispensary as part of that.
No, they they couldn't do it.
So it needs to be standalone business?
Yes.
Okay, that that I forget that question. I have a better understanding. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Thanks.
Uh thank you, Paul, for the presentation. Um. Good job, good work. Uh I appreciate you going and looking at neighboring states where it's it's happening and the fact that there's no problems there is a good sign. I think um I think you're. On the right track with everything that you proposed to us. I I I like the permitted use. I like the idea of it. The, you know, the anti clustering, so having distance rather than the number of um. Permit, uh you know, permits allowed. Uh I think the important thing for us to remember is this, this isn't. You know, us becoming Colorado and this isn't recreational use and people are going into gate edibles and go you go crazy. This is medical, this is regulated by the state, they they'll need a prescription. I think people that are recreational users. Will have no interest in this because it's probably going to be more expensive and the potency is far less than what they can get from their local dealer, so. You know, I don't think this is gonna create. Problems uh and to Rob's point, which was one of my biggest points, I think there. From what I understand, and I'm by no means an expert on this subject, but I I've paid attention to as the legislation legislation's gone through, there. Are families and people that could benefit greatly from this as as for medical uses, so. I don't think we should restrict access to our residents. I think having one in the city would be a good thing for residents that would benefit from this. Um I see very little. Downside, uh so I I I don't think we make it a difficult process. I I think. Yeah, there should be some concerns um. But I, you know, I I guess the biggest question would be is is as future legislation in the state changes. Uh once, once it's a per- permitted use. Are they grandfathered in or whatever the next level is? Like, do we have to? Kind of put our high beams on and look down the road and anticipate what the state may do five, ten years from now um and. Incorporate that in now so that, you know, having a clause about recreation, I I don't know what legally we could put in there, but that would be my. My only concern, but as far as where the law stands today in the usage, I think it's. I think there are people that could benefit from this and I see very little downside.
I just have to say that my favorite phrase of the evening and possibly so far is you did a drive by on Google Earth. That is. Welcome to the twenty twenty first century, a drive by.
So when this first was raised and I talked to mayors across the country. What I heard was, as John described, what'd you say, beer? What was it? Yeah, beer, wine, that that those are really negative places. They're, no matter what, how nice the area is that they are in. They are problematic. And so one question is, is. You know, I don't think we're on a path to, what did you say, the THC difference stuff? Like, I don't think we're going from wherever to wherever anytime soon. But potentially in our permitting, maybe there's something we can look at to, so one of the rumors on the street is is that. The CBD places and these businesses are going to be looking for a big space because they want to be prepared for when it's legal in Georgia. Right, well, I don't know that that's gonna happen anytime soon, but I don't want to set us up for creating nuisance businesses. And so it's just, I'd like to see what you can figure out about that because. I agree with, you know, it's not a bad service to provide to our residents. I wish seven other cities had already opened them. My comment about not being first, notwithstanding, um I think your recommendations are good. I might. Like to see you map out what one mile, we're thirteen miles. I don't think we need thirteen stores and so um. And what that looks like. And then one of the things I noticed on my Google drive by. Once I started looking at your pictures and so I started Googling is almost none of these have windows you can see inside of. And so I think it's gotta be point, no matter how we do it for other commercial uses. It has to be the number one point, no matter what path we go, that we don't allow fully covered windows. Because that in a, first of all, it kind of feels creepy, but secondly. Um. If they don't want us to know what they're doing in there. It makes me skeptical that they're following all the rules, even though they may be in, it could be that sunlight is bad, I don't know, or they have vampires working there or something. But it was pretty consistent. They were either in buildings that looked like nineteen seventies. Office buildings, you know, with no windows, or they were in strip shopping centers and the windows were fully covered. And so I think that's gotta be a consideration and it could be worth picking up the phone and calling someone in the industry to say. Is it a requirement? Is it the norm that your windows are fully covered? Because that's the answer for us right there is they can. They can go into an office building, there's nothing, I mean, that's the other thing is, is that they don't have to be ground floor retail. Potentially, so anyway, thank you. Did we give you enough guidance? Questions?
Yeah, you didn't.
Okay, thank you. Next, Ishri.
All right, good evening again. Um tonight I'd like to talk about the uh local road and safety action plan. Um more or less as an update and refresher and uh. I'll ask Paul to come back up and let you guys know a little bit about the uh position that we have out. Um as of right now, we have an RFP out for a consultant to design or re- review the um safety and. Problematic areas within the city and uh come up with a local road safety action plan. As you know, the FHWA has identified these plans as a proven countermeasure to reduce roadway fatalities and serious injuries. Um. These plans take local, local situations and local um physical constraints. And review them and make recommendations on what the city can do both quickly and long term. Um to improve these conditions across the city. Uh as a refresher, you guys recently um. Dedicated one point two million from the ARPA funds towards implementation and hiring for a position of this. And um we are pretty much in par with our neighbors as far as implementing. I'd like to say we're a little bit ahead even uh because we're using local funds to implement this. Uh to to get a plan um and then in the future, we can go after federal fundings for larger implementation uh projects. Um I would like to uh welcome Paul back up to talk about the position and give you an update on where we're at on that.
Yep, and then this exactly comes part of these one point two million dollars that you all appropriated. Um we have sort of considered a couple of different options for the position tighter that that we have right now is safe streets program manager. And we've sort of considered hiring like a a person and we decided not to do that. What we decided um. To do was to hire sort of a a sub consultant to our existing um collaborative contract. For community development services and that's more or less for like the the main reason is that they're probably in the Atlanta metro region, there's like. Ten people that that really know their way around um sort of bike and pedestrian issues, you know, that that aren't. This, I'm I'll have to be careful um with engineers in the room, but I'm just like engineering, traffic engineering as. As as kind of like by 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 the book um and Joe probably knows kind of those ten people sort of um. And we found that the better way is sort of to to get someone like that is through sort of a separate sub consult, sub consultant contract. Uh we have a proposal that we're reviewing right now. We've sent comments back, so but we hope that we can have that finalized. That in the next, in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I'd just like to add that um, once we get a consultant on board to put together a plan, we're hoping to get that plan done by the third quarter of this year, but. Realistically, it may push into the fourth quarter, um just because of the amount of data that they have to go through and onboarding process. Um. And again, this is just an update, trying to get your feedback and any questions or concerns you may have to this point.
Okay, uh. It's your turn.
Uh no, yeah, uh thank you, uh Ishri and Paul for uh for the information. I think it's important to note out that this is not only has value in. Us evaluating our streets and safety and what we immediately get from the plan, but that with the infrastructure law. Uh the safe streets for all or I forgot the exact uh name of it, that this is a requirement to apply for a lot of potential federal funding that'll be out there over the next several years, so. Um there there's good, gonna be significant grant money that we could hopefully put to good use, but this is a requirement to apply for any of that, so I think it's. I think it's critical that we move forward with this um both from. It's immediate usage and and how we can make our streets safer, but also for the opportunities it might present us for going after some federal funding, so thank you.
Yep, and again, kudos to you guys for allowing us to use local funds to get this done ahead of other municipalities, so we can go after federal funding once it's available.
Robin.
Just thanks for the update and I look forward to uh to getting somebody on board, getting a plan put together and maybe starting to to pick off some low hanging fruit to make the streets safer.
Agreed, thanks.
Um is there a city that I could look at that has a local road safety action plan?
Yeah, um Milton, city of Milton just adopted one and the city of Alpharetta.
Okay, so I think I looked at Milton's and one of my problems with it is it's still very general. It's still, well, you could do this, you could do this and. And I I guess in my mind. We were looking at at the corner at the intersection of Shambly, Dunwoody and Womack, you all need to do X. So what what are we looking at for a deliverable?
Um it's probably gonna be a mixture of both. Um we want, we want the bigger picture and. To help us, I mean, in design of other projects, but we also want the low laying fruit, as Rob said, that that we want to go ahead and. Try to try to address if we have the funding to do so um quickly.
So how do we, and by we, I mean you, how do you communicate that to said person entity that, you know. We we want that low hang, I mean, is that just simply that, like, we don't want just the pine sky, we need and want the low hanging fruit?
Yeah, we're we're planning to provide them accident data um that we have readily available to go through that information. That's why I said maybe. It's most likely till quarter four of this year. Um but we're gonna provide that information and tell them, you know, we we do want the low link group. If there's anything throughout the city that we can go ahead and do, um we we'd like to do that.
And remind me, the one point two is to pay for said plan and the low hanging fruit?
And person.
And, okay, well, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking, the the plan, the like, the person is doing the plan, so.
Well, there's gonna be a position here, as Paul mentioned, through the collaborative group um to manage that.
So that one point two is coming up with the plan and the person and to take care of the low hanging fruit?
Yes, as much as, as.
As much as we can, okay, just making sure I was remembered, okay.
Good catch, Joe.
Hey, Ishri, what what is this all about? I don't get it. I just don't get it. Sorry. Uh no, so. Yeah, again, I've gonna just say pinch me moment again, this is so appreciative that we're escalating this. Um and elevating it to have the fundings from in this current fiscal year for three years from the federal for the person, for the implementation, etc. Um. And and leveraging dovetailing with what um Stacy mentioned as well. Um. I know that in order to get part of the five billion dollars of the Safe Streets for All program for implementation grants, right? Uh the city of Atlanta got thirty five million dollars for one quarter. They issued out. They just, this, see, if you already had a plan on the books for federal funds, you gotta have a plan on the books. And to me, I know this is public record, check the box for the plan. But I want to implement now with those quick bills like we did in that workshop and so on, right? So it's not mutually exclusive, right, Ishri? We can. Walk and chew gum at the same time, right? Perfect, so yeah. Um but we definitely have to work quickly because a lot of cities just got, so the grants, right, they A their implementation. Grants, but you had to have a plan already, but then there was a whole slew of cities that got grants to make a plan.
Right.
So they have RFPs out in the street probably right now we're competing with.
Uh but their process is gonna be longer because of the.
When you have federal dollars, it.
Yeah, yeah, so they just got awarded it, what, less than two weeks ago?
Right.
And so Sa- Sandy Spring got three hundred and sixty thousand dollars just to come up with the plan. Roswell, two hundred K just for a.
Right, but they have to file, jump through a lot of federal hoops to get the money to do the plan.
I'm just saying that.
We'll be ahead of them.
People. I hope so.
No, we.
They're going through.
Yeah, we're ahead of them.
Okay.
They they will not be done by the end of the year.
So order magnitude. And I just wanna check the box in order to to apply because we know what we need to do.
That's right.
Uh so I'm hoping that I definitely don't think, you know, Dorville got two hundred K for Buford Highway, Decatur, smaller city than ours, is using. Two hundred K to develop a plan. It's like seven figure, eight figure max, what we get, right? We don't know how much. That's gonna come back with the RFP on on what they're gonna say, right? But you've got an RFP out there that talks about the scope of what we're asking for?
Yes.
So I guess it's, we'll find out what the market says that they want. And if they go back to say, oh, it's two hundred K, maybe we revisit that and say, oh, well, right? I don't know. I don't know if we're gonna spend two hundred K.
Well, because it's local money, we can also slightly negotiate the scope.
Okay, yeah, exactly. All right, but anyway, again, super, super thankful for um keeping this in the forefront and. For just keeping us informed as well. Thank you.
John.
I know this is an important topic. I know that there's an RFQ on the street. I know that there's federal funny money, funny money, federal money. To be uh chased and to put towards these types of projects. Um I also reviewed the Federal Highway Administration's webpage when it comes to um local road safety plans and. To me, does it, they don't, doesn't look too complicated. It looks like something really that our staff could almost do. I'm not against having it uh farmed out. But again, are we getting the right price for the right quality? But I guess that's what the RFQ is gonna show us, whether it makes sense to move forward. Uh again. I'm favorable overall. I just want to make sure that we get the, we're spending quality money to get quality reports, to get quality. Um infrastructure that the citizens want, so yeah, keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So continuing on that, I think when you get the responses, Eric, it's really important to see if that's just not an FTE. Because part, I think what we all say is that we know that there are areas that we could address if we had a staff person who could execute it. And so just something to keep in mind is, is the plan is. And so just something to keep in mind is is the plan is really important. I didn't. I haven't studied the federal stuff as much as I'd like, because I think one challenge we may have is compared to some of our neighbors. Thank goodness is the data that shows that we have fatalities. Pedestrian fatalities, cycling, right? And so, but so. I just would like to see what it would take to just do a few projects this year. Um, understanding the need for a plan and guidance. But we know where the problem, I think we know where the problem areas are. So it's just something to keep in mind is the numbers come back is whether or not. We shouldn't just have a person internally to do the report or to guide the report if that's possible. And. While working on the report, identifying a project or two that could be transformative. You know, walk to school. That kind of thing. So anyway, thank you. You got that, Eric? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Ishri. We look forward to hearing back from you. Michael Starling, you got all the way down to number fourteen tonight.
Yeah, I was sort of a little unlucky.
Right. I don't know how. Right. Because it's like the happiest part of the agenda, really. In my opinion.
Going to pull up the. If I can find it, it's a bunch of. So I'm here tonight to talk about the the Womack. Road retaining wall, and this is a very quick. Update tonight. So we. We we needed to get an answer back to Public Works on what size of the wall that we wanted to to take. So. We put an RFQ out. We selected two artists and they brought three options back to the Art Commission. And the Art Commission has selected what what they would like to do. And this is just very quickly, uh, this is the the wall and the location and we're going to. Put the. The mosaic closer to the intersection so people. Can see it. They came back with with, again, three options. We chose this one. And they also came up with two options for each one. The the smaller one. Sorry.
It's not in the presentation. No.
So I I apologize. I don't have all the slides in there. So the 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 bigger area to the to the to the left. Um, that's about fifty to sixty thousand dollars. They also offered, we could also do these three other, three or four other panels for another forty or fifty. Um, this is not a funded project for us. Um, so we are proposing to do the one big section closer to the to the intersection for. Um, for for sixty thousand dollars, we think that would be. Creating the the mosaic as well as installing the mosaic. The the two artists are are planning to install it. As well. So we just wanted to bring you. Um, a a visual of that. We're not asking for approval tonight, just keeping you. Um, up to speed. So we're going to sit down with the artist with Public Works, make sure we know exactly where that is. Public Works can then send their consult their contractors out and build the wall. And then. The Art Commission and city staff will find a way to actually pay for the this. We will get some savings from the wall. We do have a little bit in the Art Commission budget. Um, we've talked about raising money as part of this. Swanee, they pay for all of their their public art by fundraising. So. We're going to dip our toe into that and see if we can 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 make that happen with the other, we think about forty thousand dollars. So.
Okay, questions? Go ahead.
I'd I'd like. So the the large, I'd like to try to consider the other four small ones. If we did fundraising for the four small ones, potentially stick with the one big one.
So so we have to, we we have to make that decision now because the contractors have to. Carve out the section of wall that they're not going to put the put the stone. So we have to make that decision.
I don't, I don't love, it's up to the Art Commission, like what they approve, but I don't love. That look like I prefer the, I mean, that's just me, but I prefer the. Symmetry, I guess is the right word of having the one big one as opposed to the, it feels like. The other four are kind of like orphaned.
So the Art Commission did ask if if we did do the whole big portion of it, that they would all be sort of pushed up together. But we don't know exactly what that's going to look like because. They're they're almost sort of different vignettes of of the same idea. So without them going back. And sort of redoing, we're not sure what we're going to. And and the one big piece is about forty five feet long.
Right. It's a pretty spectacular. I mean, it's a nice size and it says Dunwoodie.
Yeah, if you can see that, it does spell Dunwoodie out, not as. As.
Right, so.
It's sort of hidden back there behind the trees, so to speak.
Any other questions, Catherine?
I was just down in Canlin Park where they have a very large watershed mural. That is now in grave disrepair and residents don't know who's supposed to pay for it. So. One day. This beautiful thing may fall into disrepair and the question is, who's going to maintain that? Where do those funds come from?
Yeah, I mean, this is the city's wall. It's the city's wall. It would be the city's art. So that would be up to the city. We haven't talked about this. So these are mosaics. It's it's not a mural. It's it's mosaic. So.
Right, understood.
It will last quite a while, but yes, that would eventually fall on. The city to to fund that.
I guess in beyond funding, I think it may be worthy of discussion with the artists. Because it'll be their materials and potentially. Their work that. Maybe in the contract. I don't know how you think about it, but I think a little future think on that.
Yeah, we can certainly talk to them about that. We can talk to Public Works about how we would. Sort of fit that in because eventually it's it's going to be up, it's going to be their responsibility to sort of maintain it and fix it in the future. The good thing is they're all just little tiny pieces of of mosaic. So I'm assuming. This is done other places where mosaics have gone in. They're either damaged. So we can have that conversation with them.
Thank you.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just weigh in. Basically, I'm not an artist. I'm not going to judge on the art itself. I think it looks great, right? So I mean, it's fine. But that being said, you're looking for a decision today on some aspect. I would say move forward with what you have for the forty five foot build out. Push it a little bit towards the intersection so that it's viewable from. The cars driving by on two streets, you know, Womack and Shandley Dunwoodie heading towards it. And other than that, move forward, build the big brick wall and leave a carve out for the art and those decisions will be. Uh, done in the near future when we get the funds to do it. I mean, it's just a matter of fact, this is. We are carving out public art space and we're giving you the authorization to move forward and brick the wall otherwise, right? I mean, that's. Done.
And anybody else? And thank you, Michael. Sorry you had to wait so long.
That's all right.
Eric.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, there is one other item, which is number fifteen, which is discussion of conversation. Or excuse me, conversion of contract positions to city positions within the finance department. What we'd like to do tonight, and it's in your in your document, I must, I'm just asking for a thumbs up approval. In in concept, if y'all agree with what I'm going to. Uh, say, we'll bring you back a full version probably in April after a after our employment. Our salary study is completed for the entire city. But what we're proposing to do is to take. Three of the three of the seven Jacobs positions. That are as part of our administrative services contract. And move three of those in house. So that would be the accounting team would move in house. Um, under the finance director. And then there's a fourth position. The fourth one is one position, which is the. Occupational tax slash business license position at the front counter. It's under the collaborative. We'd like to take that out from under the collaborative and bring that position in house. What that does is brings all the money positions for better control underneath as city positions. And so if y'all are okay with that in concept. Um, like I said, it's not a formal vote. It's just a discussion item. If y'all are okay, we'll bring you back at a future date, those final numbers.
Anybody have questions? Um, go ahead, John.
So it's basically for safety, security of the funding aspects as well as it's not just for cost savings, but it's really for tighter control. Over the processes to make sure that we have the cash flow. Secured.
Yes, it's for tighter control and also it also assists with. Um, keeping the quality staff that we have.
Tension.
Because what we want to do is have, you know, more secure retention processes. Especially as these contracts come towards a close each time we, it always makes the employees a little bit nervous. So this helps that stability. So yes, and the cost is, as you said, are, we'll bring you the exact numbers, but we feel it's cost neutral. Thank you.
Okay, and retention is right. So it's all interrelated to security, right? Or, yeah, okay. And we would do our own background checks.
Absolutely.
Okay. Checking our boxes. Um, today at the audit meeting, I hope it's okay for me to ask this now. Um, the audit meeting, you got a report correct on the employee unfortunate situation where the consult, the contracting firm had not. Picked up a pretty big deal in the background check, like he was on his way to federal jail. And prison. And so and what was the result of that study?
Yes. So we had our internal auditor, which is an external firm, but the internal auditor. Came in and did a complete review of the position and the person that was in the position. And they found no wrongdoing that the person had done within the city. They were in agreement or their conclusion was although this person had some wrongdoing in their past private. Job or they were privately employed by them or self-employed is what I'm trying to say. They were self-employed and they had gotten in trouble with the with the federal government over some tax. Evasion and tax scheme type issues. That was not their role at the city. Was not involved with that. So there was nothing, there was no wrongdoing that was.
But they reviewed all the books and everything. Okay.
Correct.
All right.
And we have the full report. If anybody would like to have that, that's part of, it's an open part of open record.
All right. Thank you. Uh, any questions on the convert, more questions on the conversion? All right. So we'll hear back from you sometime this spring.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments. Dr. Cohen. I think he left. Thank you. All right. Public comments, Peter. You'll need to fill out another card, but you can do that after you finish. You'll have three minutes.
Prince, again, I just wanted to say thank you. You know, for the open, transparent and candid conversation, you know, one of the things in the world today is, you know. Everybody's got different opinions and, you know, being able to put those out in a very respectful way in an open way. You know, to kind of hear different thoughts is, you know, very appreciated. So, you know, thank you all for that, for the eighty two homes that, you know, live within a half mile. You know, of that cut through where this issue was, you should be applauded for that and, you know. Appreciate that, you know, some points just for consideration going forward. You know, as you look at the actual piece of land, it's a residential property to which communities have been built around and established. It's very oddly shaped, so I think you have a great opportunity to be able to set a precedent. From, you know, those defenses, you know, that go back there, giving homeowners what I would call a certainty. At a master plan, where they have a minimum buffer where they back up, I think gives ease of mind and ease of mind in today's world, I think is important. As you consider, you know, you know, some type of, you know, screening as well, so they can't be seen. Um, yeah, thank you for the stormwater comments. Yeah, I think you have some good ideas for Connor or floated out and. Yeah, I'm sure some folks, they'll put their minds at ease and, you know, see what the budgets are. But again, you know, thank you very much. It's very appreciated.
Thank you. Um, that concludes public comment. Um, city manager comments.
Uh, yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I didn't want to just bring up for the public consumption. Uh, we did. Last week, we did lose a beloved colleague of ours, our our finance director, Linda Neighbors. After fighting a battle with cancer, she did pass away. And just wanted to mention that for everybody that that was a. Very, you know, touching situation for all the all the staff. From that standpoint and. And the staff has been, was very supportive of Linda. Linda was always very supportive of her staff. Like I said, she will be deeply missed from that standpoint. On the second note that I just want to say along that same line. Richard Platto. Uh, will. Replace Linda from as a finance director. And I just want to mention that from the standpoint that, you know, talked to Richard for a long time about it prior to him. Uh, making this announcement, but like Richard said, he is excited about the position. He hates the way he has, he's coming into it. That's not his goal. Linda had worked very hard with Richard to come up to kind of groom him into the position. And and she and I had many conversations over the years about. Um, you know, what her goals were for the department. Have complete confidence in Richard. He'll do a great job within the department. Richard, why don't you, everybody I think knows you just stand up, you know, you don't have to do any kind of anything other. I just wanted everybody to. Acknowledge that. So congratulations to him, but. Mayor, however you want to pursue, that's, we do not need an executive session, but however you want to proceed with that, but I did want everybody to know. Uh, about Linda's passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council comment.
There is a apparently some kind of shooting at Michigan State University. We had a shooting here Saturday night. We have a gun problem in this country. Don't everyone can disagree about the solution, but we have a gun problem in this country and I don't really have an answer, but. Too many people making really bad choices that impact. Permanently people's lives. Leave it at that. Um, with that, I believe since we don't need executive session, we need a motion to.
Adjourn.
Move by.
Second.
Second by Tom, was that you, Tom? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.